Start our Cook County Board of Commissioners regular meeting today, Tuesday, December 17th, with the Pledge of Allegiance if we'd all rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, as we get ready today, are there any adjustments or changes to the agenda?
Administrator updates under Administrator, if I could please.
All right, so we will add Administrator Updates to Item 9, let's make that 9D. Are there any other adjustments or changes to the agenda? Seeing or hearing none, is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner White, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, we have a motion and support to approve our agenda as amended. Any discussion, anything further? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now at this time to our public comment period, an opportunity for citizens to appear before the county board. And please note that when you're invited to come up and speak, to speak into our microphone for clarity, sign the public comment sheet stating your name, address, and the topic you're addressing, and you may speak respectfully for up to five minutes. And public comment is reserved for the board to hear your views, it's not a time for debate. At this time, are there any members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Good morning.
Arvis Thompson, 1455 County Road 14. I want to address some issues that were a part of the agenda today. I'd like to begin with, and this isn't part of the agenda, I'd like to begin with a rumor that perhaps you could clarify at some point for the public, and that is that our crisis mental health worker has resigned. Operating from Florida, as I understand, he was, made no sense in the first place. We could have hired someone from China at that rate. Who decided that a local worker, that we needed to hire a local worker to handle the crisis in Cook County when we paid for that service already, except it went to Florida? Cook County operated for, I believe it was 18 months, without this position being filled. And I'm not advocating that we should or should not have such a service, but did all of you commissioners know what was being negotiated at the time of his hiring? When does the word "preposterous" fit this convoluted hiring practice? And now, months of salary spirited away with what benefit to Cook County? No further ahead, and the question of transparency, I think, has been ignored. The strategic organizational plan, at the time it was adopted, a statement was made to the effect that this was a series of suggested goals that under, to be implemented under the best circumstances with adequate funding. And yet, the sentiment now seems to be that because the plan was approved, it means we can go ahead and implement it without, or whether the county can afford it or not. Circumstances change, availability, affordability changes, real need should be evaluated again. Specifically, let's talk about the Human Relations Department. You're being asked to approve another full-time position. This would make a staff of 2.5 persons doing a job that I heard you say in a recent meeting was done by one person in a county twice the size of Cook County. I know how you enjoy throwing comparisons at us as a basis to justify a direction you want us to go. I'll throw this one around. If the current position requires some additional skills, then why not work out how these skills can be acquired so that you help to build a better department with who we have on staff? Hiring another person to cover a skill set is not a fix for this department, or any other department now or in the future. There is a request today to contract a Firewise Coordinator. We know one of the challenges in this position is to advise landowners how best to protect their homes and property from fire. There are several examples of locals here for many years who wasted the time and money of the Firewise person. They got their inspection and did none of the recommendations that were advised. So I pose this question. What is the power of this position to enforce the recommendations? The involvement of DNR, Forest Service, and other agency, agencies means a lot of federal, state, and county money to fulfill the job. The requirements of assessing, but what of enforcement? How effective is a Firewise Coordinator? How many inspections are made? How many of these actually have follow-through? Is there an annual report that supports the need for and successes of the coordinator? This position has a perpetualness about it because we're all so afraid of fire. Has anyone asked the question, when will we see what's been accomplished over all these years? Or do you know that already, and we just need to share it with the public? And lastly, Commissioner Mills made an offhand comment last week that was published in the December 7th News Herald, and he says he felt like Commissioner Johnson was dragging out her decision. Since when do we criticize our fellow commissioners for asking questions? Isn't this board meeting a time to ask, to express concerns, to expect at least the courtesy of listening and giving some thought to each person's request for more information, and time when they ask? You lose nothing by respecting a request for information and time. To go back and correct is more complicated than making a sound decision you can live by.
Thank you. Are there other members of the public that wish to speak this morning? Any other members of the public that wish to speak? Have any commissioners or our inner administrator received comments to read? All right, we'll close our public comment period and move on to our consent agenda items. We have claims, minutes, a donation for the County Sheriff's Department, a Ski North Ultra 2025 Special Road Use Permit, the approval of the promotion of Steve Olson to Maintenance Worker 3, and the approval of our annual solid waste hauler's license. Any items a commissioner wishes to pull? Commissioner White?
I would like to have a discussion about the Ski North Ultra 2025 Special Road Use Permit, more precisely about what that event is, because if it's the one I heard about on the radio, it's 2650 or 100 miles of.
Kilometers, yeah.
And I think this would be an interesting thing to promote from this, from this spot this morning, to tell the public about this event, like 100 kilometers. That's a long ways, so anyway, when we get to that.
All right, so we will pull Item D. Any other items a commissioner wishes to pull? All right. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as changed or as modified?
I'll so move.
Thank you, Commissioner White, is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So with Item D, is there anyone that would like or be able to address that specifically? I know it is a new race, I heard about it as well on WTIP, and I have the information that we all have in our packet. Does anyone else have additional information?
Commissioner Sullivan, I can speak to it a little bit if you.
That would be wonderful if you'd come up to one of the microphones. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, the organizer of that ski race did reach out to me as to what she would need for EMS services, an emergency plan, a safety plan. She has done previous races in the metropolitan area, and when she came up here skiing, she just loved the area and thought it would be a great, great area to have a race up here. I believe the radio segment said it'll be the longest cross-country ski race in the state, I believe. She's very, she wants to make sure she's doing everything proper. I'm going to share some of the other, as you know, when these permits come through, we usually have a safety or, you know, a plan, an emergency plan. I'm going to share some of the other plans that I'm involved with, with her, so she'll know kind of next time, you know, to be a little more thorough. But I did walk her through getting hold of the West End First Responders and the ambulance service and others, so, and she has her road crossings covered pretty good, so I think she's got it pretty well, and I'll continue to work with her up until the event, so.
Well, thank you very much, we appreciate that information. Any other comments or questions? Commissioner?
Just a comment, so these road use permits have been discussed at the Highway Advisory Committee meeting a few times about the amount of staff time involved in these kind of events. And, of course, I raised the question, should, is $100 enough to cover the staff time? And of course, it's not. Now, I understand part of it is promoting events, but just to be aware, as commissioners, there is a lot of work that goes into outside groups that come in to make money off of these events in our community. So, one of the things I suggested is, does it matter if you are an organization within Cook County, like the Lions Club, or other organizations outside the community that are coming in to use our trails and our roads for their events? Still great events, love to watch the bike race, but there is a cost to the residents and taxpayers of Cook County, and just want to acknowledge that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Commissioner Starley.
So what road or where is this going to be held?
It's in the Cascade State Park area, and then up to the Valley Creek, is it?
Yeah.
Trails up in there.
So a part of seven would be used, or is it on the trails?
It's basically on all the ski trails that are present.
Okay. Other questions?
If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve the permit.
Thank you, Commissioner White, is there support?
I'll support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. A motion and support, anything further? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on now to Item 4, which is an acknowledgement of Wayne Henchey. And Cook County is deeply grateful for the exceptional contributions of Wayne Henchey, whose dedication and expertise profoundly shaped Cook County. Wayne, who passed away recently, served as our county surveyor for many years, providing invaluable guidance to land services on matters concerning Platts. His work not only improved the accuracy of land records, but also strengthened the foundation of responsible development in Cook County. Wayne's life was marked by a spirit of service and adventure. He began with a journey in the Peace Corps, serving in Africa, went on to a distinguished career with the U.S. Forest Service, and served by fighting wildfires for the U.S. Forest Service, supported by humanitarian logistics in the Serbia Kosovo War, and he contributed to critical projects in both Brazil and Haiti. Wayne brought the same sense of mission and professionalism to Cook County, where his efforts left a lasting legacy. Locally, he served on our Soil and Water Conservation District Board and played a pivotal role on the subdivision ordinance committee. His work led to the adoption of Cook County's official plan manual and improvements to administrative subdivisions, open space developments, and planned unit developments. Wayne's passion for his craft was evident in his commitment to correcting old survey corners, addressing longstanding inaccuracies in property descriptions that often hindered clear land titles. One of Wayne's most impactful achievements was his work on the east end of Cook County. Partnering with the Boundary Commission, he successfully resolved a significant area of property discrepancies, streamlining titles, and clearing the path for more orderly development. His work was meticulous, and not only benefited particular property owners, but also ensured that our county land records were as accurate and reliable as possible. Wayne used his sense of humor, his charm, and ability to help all of us, whether commissioners, when he came a year and a half ago to speak before us, whether he was speaking to staff, citizens, or others, to understand his work and the importance of it. Wayne Henchey was a remarkable individual, a servant leader, an adventurer, and a true professional. His legacy lives on in the land he helped define here in Cook County, and the community he served with both care and integrity. Cook County is better because of Wayne's vision and tireless efforts, and we will remember him with respect, gratitude, and admiration. Thanks to Wayne Henchey. Let's give him a round of applause. We'll move on at this point to the next item on our agenda, and we'll ask Mike Keport to come back and visit with us about emergency management.
Thank you, Ms. White.
Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners, community members. As you know, our Firewise program has been around for almost 20 years. Lot of work has been done over them 20 years, and it's, we've kind of made a statement, it's one of the most robust programs in the state, maybe the nation. But, as you may know, if you followed along, that this is the third time in less than four years that I've had to look for a qualified Firewise Coordinator. I reached out to the other counties to kind of see how they're managing theirs. Let me back up, our last coordinator managed Lake County and Cook County. Our Firewise Committee chose to not go that route anymore. The mileage, and our current coordinator lives in Ely, so to go from Ely to end of the Gunflint, for instance, I mean, that's a half a day right there. So, we don't want to go that, we don't want to share with Lake County anymore, it's the committee's decision to have our own independent coordinator again. In reaching out to the other counties, though, St. Louis County currently uses a company known as Dovetail Partners. So their program goes through this company. It allows them to have more resources, more skilled grant writing. So I reached out to a local, what I would call local, Dovetail Partners is actually out of the Twin Cities, and it works well for them. They've been doing it for quite a number of years now. It's just less stress on the emergency manager, and when it comes to hiring, then that company would do the hiring. They would go find these qualified coordinators should we need one. So I did reach out to Paramount Planning, which is a little more local, they're based in Carlton, Minnesota. The owner of this business is an emergency manager and does many other types of work, like writing emergency operations plans, updating emergency operations plans, writing exercises, and conducting exercises. That type of work, he's very familiar with the Firewise program, and has agreed to enter into contract with us should we go that route. Some of the advantages, like I mentioned, is the hiring factor. Of course, we, I would, it really doesn't change what I do, because I'm still responsible for this program, and it's grant money coming through our county, so it's Auditor Powers and myself responsibility to manage that, funds that come through our county. But, not only, a big part of the Firewise program is grant writing, and this company works on grants on practically a daily basis. We would have the opportunity not only to secure the grants that we use now, but potentially have more grant money funded, funding this program, making the program even, even better. The other part of, the service agreement you have before you is basically the same service agreement we would use for an individual, this is just going through a company. The only addition to this service contract is this, Paramount Planning has agreed to help us with our Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which is in need of an update, and they are willing to have this person that we, they hire, help us with that update of that plan. And kind of going back to the grants, Auditor Powers will tell you that the grants that we have now, since the five-plus years I've been here, are dwindling. There will be a point, I believe, down the road, that we're going to be coming to you asking for funding should, in order to keep this program going. I believe by going through an outside consultant and having more grant opportunities, it would take stress off the county. And as you know, that this program right now is 100% grant-funded, it's not, in no way, shape, or form costs the county or anyone else any money to keep this program running currently, but as I say, it's, we're losing funding every year, little by little, so. Having said all that, I would stand for questions about the service agreement in front of you.
Commissioner Starley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. It was asked earlier at our meeting, is there any kind of follow-up to know what actually is done by each property owner? I know when they come to my place, I do a few things right around the house, and then lately, Mother Nature's been knocking down trees for me, so that my tree outline around the house is getting a lot better, that was recommended. So, is there any kind of follow-up as to how effective this is?
Well, yes, the, I guess the answer would be, we can't, we can't force people what to do with their property, it's just recommendations, and it's typically at no cost to the homeowner. I take that back. Some of the funds that we use, the homeowner has to do what's matching funds, so match, it's not matching funds, it's no dollar amount, but they have to volunteer hours to help match the funds that we give them to, for instance, hiring a local contractor to haul away the debris. So there is, so I get the reports as to what the, what the homeowners or homeowners associations do, as to their volunteer work, and the invoices come through me as to, you know, a local contractor hauls that debris away. In some situations where we do larger thinning pieces, the U.S. Forest Service will actually come and burn these piles in place.
And I would add that the U.S. Forest Service has been very active this fall in burning some of those piles. We had some piles that didn't get burned in the past because of black of snow, so we really do have a significant reduction in fuel. And I know in my district, if you go up the Gunflint Trail, you can see the many, many acres that have had fuel reduction done on private property, and it's been very, very effective. But, again, as Mike said, the Firewise Coordinator is not an enforcer, they don't have authority, they make recommendations. But we do have grant dollars that are out there, matching funds, and as he mentioned, lake associations, road associations, or Firewise communities can apply for funding on an annual basis, and can get that for five years in a row. So it really helps property owners to decrease the costs that they would incur, and they can also get paid for their time. Commissioner White?
Consequences for, I'll just talk about flowing, flowing some driveways in this county as my husband does. There are driveways that are almost in a tunnel because of the fir trees on either side that are dense, you know, they're like, they're really thick, and there's no way, and then you get to the end, there's no place for a fire truck to turn around. There's like, yeah, they have a loop, but no, it's too tight. So, if the fire department were to say, and I have always understood that, if the truck can't get in and out, you're on your own, I mean, though they will try to help you another way, they'll come in with four-wheelers and whatever the case may be, but there's, you know, there are consequences for not having a clear path. And if people hear from the fire department, because my understanding is that the fire department does inspections of, of the different residents, like, here's a new road, what do they need? And they can make recommendations also. Would funding be available through the grant, the money from Firewise for these people to clear back the right-ofways?
Yes.
Yes, yeah, one of the grants that we will be putting in for immediately here, we will have that type of work listed under that grant. The grants have changed, this is a DNR grant I'm speaking of, the, how they worded has changed a little bit, so they want specific work. We can't just say we're going to thin 40 acres. So that, we put that in last year's grant, too, for widening of private roads.
Yeah, it's widening and also going up 14 feet, so that there's a nice clear path for an ambulance or for a fire truck.
Okay.
And the Firewise Coordinator does make those recommendations, so that there's either a U or a T that a fire truck or an ambulance can back around in.
And it's through the Firewise program that we get the grant.
Correct.
Yes.
And so otherwise, even though the homeowners would be made aware of fire danger around their house, I see it as a public safety, more than just saving your house. We have a lot of forests up here, and you don't see your neighbor because of the forest, but if one place goes, that forest in between is not a buffer to save you, it can be a danger. So for that reason, we have incredible volunteer fire departments that, and we search and rescue and all of that, so.
And our volunteer firefighters, by the way, do work very closely with our Firewise Coordinator. They come to our meetings that we have. They come to our meetings that we have on a monthly basis and give reports and updates. So it's really a nice collaborative group.
So this contract is for not to exceed $44,000 a year?
And that's the grant money that we get.
Yeah, and that's basically what we pay now. So the money part has not changed at all. And as you see in the contract, we will still be invoiced monthly, just as we are now. So the financial part will not change at all.
And this financial part is coming from grant dollars, not from levy dollars?
Yeah, this is.
I mean, granted, we're all paying taxes everywhere, but it's not.
Yeah, this is 100% grant funded, yep.
Mr. Johnson, you had a question?
Yeah, about that compensation, I just was kind of confused about one of the lines here. So compensation be paid monthly and within 30 days of receipt of invoice. Monthly progress reports and claim forms shall be submitted by the contractor to you as requested. And I'm just, wouldn't progress reports be submitted along with, here's my invoice, this is what I did?
Yeah, what we do now is we have a, we have a very lengthy invoice that we spell out by code, you know, like R3 is brush removal. I mean, it spells out exactly what they did on the invoice that I get every month.
Okay, so that's what I wanted to know.
So I know exactly what they did that month, yes.
Okay, I just didn't want a bill saying, here, pay me $3,300 for this month.
And when I talked to the owner of this company, I said I would prefer something more in addition to that, kind of a written, and he is willing to meet in person. That's been a bit of a problem since I've been emergency manager here is getting, is having that personal connection and personal meetings. I think that's more effective than a piece of paper myself, so we can be on the same page.
Thank you for that clarification.
Any other questions or comments? Attorney Hickon.
This is an agreement I haven't had a chance to completely review and edit. I'm going to have a couple suggested additions to the agreement. Nothing that's going to change the dollar amount. I would just be adding language which reduced the risk to the county related to any, you know, potential misinterpretation of an employment relationship, those kind of things. So my request is that commissioners approve this pending the final modifications and approval of the county attorney.
Commissioner White.
Is this good practice? We've been here before. We don't have the final thing in front of us. And so should we not see the final thing before we approve it? I'm not saying we don't trust what you're going to do because sometimes we don't exactly know what you're doing anyway. But it's all right. But is it a good practice to approve a contract without the contract being finalized, in the final form?
I think it's up to you and the, I mean, the business interests might be that we need something in place before the next meeting. I got this agreement on last week, so with everything else, I haven't had an opportunity to review it. So I guess it's a necessary practice. The best practice would be to have every word be the same, you know, so that you can judge it.
And I guess I would jump in as serving on the Firewise Committee, and Mike, you can speak to this as well. It's really important for us to get somebody on board as soon as possible. I would trust Attorney Hickon to make any edits and would feel comfortable with her edits and her approval and allow this to move forward so that we could as soon as possible fill this position and get that person writing grants for us. I think it's really important.
And again, it's not a matter of trust or professionalism or anything, but it's process, process. Get the stuff to the attorney in a time, get this stuff to the attorney in a timely manner so the attorney can get it to us in a timely manner, complete it going forward. I mean, that's just.
My issue was that I wanted the Firewise Committee to approve it first, and that meeting was only a week and a half ago, so.
So we approved it on a Thursday, and then it went to Attorney Hickon.
I was on a bit of a time crunch, so I apologize for that.
Well, just, we should all strive to have a better process. And I know that life interferes with the process a lot, so, okay.
Other questions?
No.
Would anyone like to make a motion? So moved. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much, and thank you, Attorney Hickon, for carefully reviewing this as well. We'll move on to item six at this point, which is our Highway Engineer Robbie Hess.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. So a couple of things under highway today. First thing is the sign policy. And so that's one of the last ones that we've actually had a chance to get through, not only Highway Advisory Committee, but also, if you remember, a committee of the whole session as well. And so in front of you is kind of that final version that we put together off of some of the comments we had discussed. I think some of the big ones is really just allowing us to, you know, in some cases, use our best judgment in the field on it. You can't make everything black and white, even though I would love it if that was the case. But, you know, there's always going to be circumstances that arise where, you know, you need to use judgment in the field. So I guess, does anybody have any questions about the sign policy?
Any questions or comments from those that serve on Highway Advisory? Commissioner White.
I would just like to have the Engineer Hess one more time explain why we can't have children at play signs on a busy stretch of the Arrowhead Trail.
Happy to explain that. MINDOT doesn't make them anymore. That's it. They are not, they are not, not MINDOT. The MUTCD, so the Manual and Uniform Traffic Control Devices, specifically the Minnesota Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Devices, they don't make that sign anymore. I think it's been several years since that's been an official, like lawful sign. So you still do see them up in places. The one I can think of off the top of my head is Eighth Avenue, heading down the hill. There's one there. But once that comes down, they just don't make them anymore. So they're ineffective. I'm not sure why they don't make them anymore, but that would be why.
Could we get one from Amazon?
No.
Right, I get the whole thing where we've discussed that speed zones, everything are only effective for a short period of time. But in the one instance where someone goes, oh, it might save a life, that's all. And where I'm thinking of, it's a growing family neighborhood. There's, on a busy stretch of the Arrowhead, so that's what I'm.
It's something we could think about and look at a little more closely. I think it's important to, I mean, you're familiar with the Arrowhead Trail?
Yeah.
Yeah, you know, that's not a 20 mile an hour road. It's a 55 mile an hour road. That is a county-state aid highway. So, you know, the point of that road is people A to B. Not necessarily to slow down through and go 20 miles an hour through an area. Now, while I certainly understand that we want to be cautious when there are families that do live on our state aid highways, that happens in a lot of places. The Gunflint, in town, granted, that's slower, but still. You know, the point of the policy and the point of a sign in general, right, is effectiveness. And so we want people to pay attention to signs and not just ignore them if we put too many up. That being said, to your question of can we buy them off of Amazon or could we put something else up? That's always a topic of conversation that we can keep looking at. Because I know, you know, as we're all aware, research changes all the time. The more data we get, the more information we have, the more we can say, hey, actually, studies have shown some other new technique will make an area safer or slow down. Or some new type of technology gets everybody to slow down. That'd be amazing, and I hope that happens.
Rumble strips, but otherwise, no, I'm just, I'm not suggesting that people go 20 miles an hour just so they are alert.
Right.
Understand that there might be a child and/or their dog doing a child thing and running into the road after their ball or something.
Right, right. Totally makes sense, and I know when we had that town hall and we were talking to everybody up there, I know that's a concern for people up there. I mean, it's something that's in the back of my head as we start to propose projects, especially in that area. You know, and if you remember, like we talked about, it's tough when you get into those. There's no silver bullet, a lot, when it comes to speeding, when it comes to a lot of that type of stuff. You know, you would love to have a speed bump everywhere, but now you're talking 5, 10 miles an hour.
No, I was kidding on the speed bumps. But just that people are aware that now people live in this area. Because you're heading, you're going.
Right.
I get that, so.
Nope, always a topic of conversation, for sure, yes.
Other questions regarding the sign policy? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign policy.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Is there support?
I'll support that.
Thank you, Commissioner White. We have a motion and support. Anything further? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The next thing on here is something we talk about almost at nauseam, I feel like, sometimes when it comes to Highway Committee. Not too much of the Committee of the Whole, but here I bring a lot of very expensive contracts all the time because that's the name of the business, is that. So one thing I hope everyone can remember is a couple Committee of the Holes ago, I had produced a graph for everybody, and I think it went back to 2009. Showed how many projects we do every single year. So if you remember, up until a few years ago, it was one project a year, or zero in some cases. And so over the last few years, we've changed that. We've done three, four, five, six. Kind of depends the year. And so that's the trend I like doing. I don't like being bored. I don't want my staff to be bored. They like this method as well. And so what it is, is hiring out construction inspection services. And so in the simplest of terms, what that is, is when construction is going on, somebody needs to be there all the time monitoring what's going on. That can also include taking truck tickets, for example, counting trucks, measuring different things. So you can imagine, one person on a job doing that can get quite cumbersome, things get missed. And so what we started to do that has really enabled us to do more is hire out kind of that type of stuff, counting trucks, measuring things. Not that my staff can't, but I have three staff to do that. So I can't do five projects if I only have three staff. And so what we do is hire out these services for kind of that day-to-day, I don't want to say monotonous, but that type of stuff. My staff moves into more project management then. And so, you know, they're handling 98% of things out on the project. And then really, I get a phone call if, you know, something basically is wrong, is when I get a call. It's worked out great for us over the last few years. We've been able to deliver, like I said, three, four, or five projects a year now. Next year is looking, I think we have, this is five different ones. And in the next few years, it'll still continue that way with this service. So any projects that are on state aid roads, so CASAs 1 through 23, that is reimbursable funds. So yes, that is a big number in that contract, but big portions of that are also reimbursable to us from the state. Anything on a county road, though, for example, Tofti Park Road, that would come out of the levy or the TST fund, local accounts. So that's kind of how that works. Does anybody have any questions about this contract?
Any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. Commissioner White.
A question?
Yes.
Sorry. What does it cost?
So I believe the number on this one is around 3/4 of a million dollars. And so that was, you know, a big part of that.
For the services of this?
Yes. And so that include, you know, if you remember, well, if you look at it, you can see there's the big mill to the hill project on there. That's a big chunk of it. You can see the Arrowheads on there as well, in Chicago Bay Road. I'm trying to, I could click into it and go through it if you'd like, but yeah, about 3/4 of a million. And pieces of that, like I said, are reimbursable from different avenues.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Commissioner White. I'll support, since that mill to the hill project will be slowing me down for a long time, but I'm excited to support it.
Yes.
Any comments or questions? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate all you do. All right, we'll move on to item seven, land services. And Director Nelson is here to talk about the sale of semi-trailers. We get some money from this.
Thank you, and good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. And yes, typically I'm coming before you to request funds to spend, money to acquire equipment. And we're at a point where we've acquired enough. And generally, when we do acquire stuff, we just kind of stop using ours or use what we had been until we can't anymore. There's very little value. The three semi-trailers, what we're talking about here, are no longer roadworthy. They don't pass the DOT inspection. And frankly, as we have an existing policy where there's a certain amount of money that as a department head, we can spend without coming to the board, we, there should be or could be a policy on how to dispose of equipment once it's below a certain amount. I have had this discussion with Brady. And over the course of the years that I have been here, I've actually done it all three ways. If it, if a piece of equipment or something is below, and Brady can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it's $15,000, then it can be disposed of either by auction or by bids or even direct negotiations. And frankly, as I indicated, for the different pieces of equipment, depending on the time of year and things that are happening, I have utilized all three different methods. If it's close to, say, the highway department's doing an auction, we'll just throw it in with that or whatever the case may be. Right now, there isn't anything going on. And so it is fairly, the way that the regulations are stated, that it is, we could do it any one of either, any of those ways, but it's at the discretion of the county commissioners. And because we don't have a specific act of policy, that's why I'm just coming to you. I really don't have a preference. I've done it, I guess, most frequently through just the letting of bids. I've had, of the three semi-trailers that we do have sitting out there, I've had two people, two separate individuals, come to me. And so I know that they would kind of go either if we did through the, through bids or by direct negotiations. I'd rather not go on auction because it takes a little bit more to set up and to go through all of that rigmarole. So I'm fine with either way, just looking for the consensus of the board and which way you'd like to go about it.
So I guess my thought in, you know, this process is that the most neutral and kind of open process is to do the sealed bids. What kind of timeframe typically does that involve, would you expect?
And I guess Brady or the county attorney could identify the timeframe in which we let it out, but I imagine it's a few weeks. If we put out for bids now, I think in mid-January, we would probably get those in. But especially with the holiday season.
Does mid-January seem reasonable?
I think the requirement is 10 days before an event generally. But I think the bigger question is, you know, how long do you want it out there to have people get a chance to take a look at it?
Absolutely. Other commissioners? Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I'm just curious about why we wouldn't use the auction site that the highway department uses. Now, according to them, it's a real easy site to navigate. They get lots of responses and get lots more money than they expect to get most of the time. So why wouldn't we just put it on there and have the local people bid there?
Well, generally, Commissioner Johnson, Madam Chair, my view of it would be that, you know, maybe the people that are, or had approached me that are interested in it are interested in storage and not in utilization. They would not pass DOT specs. So I would imagine that people look to that auction site for equipment that would still be functional or would be working as opposed to something that may just be utilized for storage capacity on a piece of property or so. And so they may not look at the site, and it would be more of a statewide view rather than keeping it as a local thing. But I'm certainly wide open if you guys want to. But it's, I'm certainly wide open if you guys want to throw it on there on the auction site.
As a mother of a son who looks at that stuck kind of stuff all the time for stuff he doesn't really need, I just think that's a more neutral, when we're talking neutral way of making sure people know about it because, guess what? Most of us don't read the newspaper, small print. This is what's happening. So, I'm just trying to be, think of going beyond what we've always done and make, yeah, maybe we do need a different policy to think about that.
Commissioner White?
What do you do in the interim? You're talking the big semi-trailers that sit behind. Are, we're not using them, though?
That is, oh, I'm sorry.
No, we're not using them now, or what's going to replace them?
We have already replaced those, Commissioner White, Madam Chair. We had already acquired those. We ran into kind of a three-for special earlier in, I think it was this year or late last year. And frankly, those ones that are no longer DOT certified have been basically just sitting there. And yeah, we haven't been using those. And if we were to use those, we would kind of sneak them over to a site closer by or whatever, but we haven't. We are flush with semi-trailers. The harder to get rid of, I mean, semi-trailers, at least there is some sort of function for them in terms of storage capacity on a property or whatever, even though they're not roadworthy. The more difficult ones are those trailers with the multi-bins that are on those, because by the time that we're done with those and use those, even to be used as a flatbed trailer, they are not really serviceable at all. And so, those generally kind of go as scrap metal as opposed to being able to be utilized for anything. But the semis do have some value, but not very much.
And they, so they're just taking up space?
That is correct.
Okay. So, I think we need to be as neutral, and we need to be as fair, equitable to everybody. And yeah, there are people, I know people like that, not your son specifically, they just look, just to see, just to see, oh, I could really use that, like, what? You know, I mean, there might be somebody else out there that, how they get a non-roadworthy semi to their place if they live in, like, Old Esco or someplace, I don't know, but someone might be interested in doing it. And do?
My son can tell you.
Who can do it for you?
You, and you'd set the lowest, you would set a base price. If you don't get this price, then you're not selling it, or just anything goes?
Well, basically, in the fact, when it comes to an auction or even the sealed bids, I just let the kind of the marketplace work. You know, whenever it's gone to auction, I've worked hand-in-hand with whatever the highway engineer is at that point, and I would then turn and kind of talk to Robbie and say, hey, you want to do that for me?
Other Commissioners? Else want to weigh in on this?
Well, I've heard the sterling, surprising numbers that the Highway Department has gotten for some pieces of used equipment that was totally unexpected, and so, you never know. You might have a dilapidated, non-roadworthy semi that has been something someone has always wanted, and there'll even be a bidding war. I don't know, but I think we should go that route.
So, is there a motion?
Is that your motion?
Yeah, it's my motion.
Put it into a motion, Commissioner.
I make a motion that we put those trailers from, on the auction site. And I'll leave it in the hands of Tim Nelson to set that up, or with the help of Engineer Haas.
Is there support?
Support.
We have a motion and support. Any further questions or discussion? I have a question for Director Nelson. Will you inform the people that are interested in the trailers that it's going to be on the auction site?
Most definitely. I would, in fact, expect probably calls from them this afternoon already to see the result of today's meeting.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted to make sure that people that were currently interested.
Yes.
Don't miss out on this.
And will they be, excuse me, will they be able to bid on this site even though it's, okay, the engineer says yes, anybody can bid on this site? Okay, that's good. Yes, let those people know.
Other questions? We have a motion and support. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I'll make a great Christmas gift.
Thank you. Please note that we will ask for a report back on all the money you made us.
I do, I want.
I'm Madam Chair. Is there some reason we skipped 6A? We did 6A.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
Sign policy.
Sign policy.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Talked about children at play?
Yep.
No, on conveyance of the county-owned land to HRA.
That's an old agenda, Commissioner.
Oh, it's an old agenda?
Yeah.
Oh, because Ms. Hamilton is here, I thought maybe she would have.
Yeah, she's on for Item 10.
10, okay.
Yeah.
It came out on my report for today. I've got it right here.
Well, that's the old.
That's, yeah. It was republished.
I saw that, I mean.
It was republished. I printed it off, too.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, here we go.
All right, we are on Item 8, Human Resources. Good morning.
We respectfully request to swap, switch around the items, since we have Matt and Robbie here and knowing that the next, the A agenda item will probably take a bit longer, so then we can allow them to leave and be on their way.
All right, we will move to Item 8B, which is extension of the resignation date for Kurt Loboda.
Sounds good. All right. So, today we bring forth, this is the first time I've done this, is requesting an extension to a resignation date for Highway Maintenance Worker 3, Kurt Loboda. So, at our last meeting on December 3, we approved his resignation effective January 3. But since then, with discussions, and then this morning on the consent agenda, you approved the promotion of Current Maintenance Worker 2, Steve Olson, into backfilling that potentially soon-to-be vacated position of Maintenance Worker 3. Discussions have led to having Kurt stay on a little longer. Kurt has been with the county for almost 20 years now and has an extensive background in grading. Even before working for the county, he grew up in a grading family, and that knowledge and experience is really invaluable, especially as we have and bring on Steve Olson and train him. So, looking to request an extension of that resignation date by two months, pushing it back from January 3 to March 3. Knowing that there is a financial impact on that as well, Lisa Sorley, the Highway Account, put together some financials, and I included just a summary in the Board Agenda Item. But what Jana just handed out is the, kind of the spreadsheet that Lisa provided as to what the additional cost would be. So, the information in front of you is Lisa figured, okay, well, if Kurt was still to resign on January 3, hypothetically, if we brought a Maintenance Worker 2 in to backfill Steve Olson's position, say at a Step 3, what do those costs look like with wages and fringe for that hypothetical new employee compared to what we would continue to pay Kurt for that position and his current benefits? So, Lisa calculated it would be an additional monthly cost to keep him on at around, like, $2,650 per month. However, one thing to note, too, that's for two months, that in talking with Matt and Robbie, that they don't have intentions to fill the Maintenance Worker 2 position right now during the winter and spring months, that we would do the recruiting and selection process later on, late spring, early summer, to prepare for that season. So, potentially, we wouldn't be filling that position either, say, for the months of March and April, maybe bringing someone on in May. So, in the additional cost with keeping Kurt on is kind of also then negated by a savings for not immediately filling that position.
I'm sure what. Don't we have need for another maintenance person for those months?
I guess, I'll speak to that.
Okay.
So, Steve Olson, who we hired to be Kurt's replacement, he is technically what we call the floater. So, he does not have an assigned route except for the sidewalks in town, and we thought we'd just let those go. No, I'm just kidding. We will be backfilling that with shop staff and supervisory staff, because that's easy, it's close to our shop, and we can just do that. But yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, well, I think this works out well. We've talked about the knowledge we've been losing with some recent retirements. So, I'm wondering about a training plan. So, how are you going, how is Curtis going to train this new employee?
It's a good question. I mean, he's, kind of what we've established with especially recent Maintenance 2s that have left are, it's kind of a shadowing program. So, you know, Kurt's going to continue to be in the greater somewhat with Steve following him. Then it kind of transfers to a reverse, Steve's in the greater, Kurt's following him, and then Steve's on his own, Kurt's on call. That's sort of generally our practice. We also have grading programs that are put on by LTAP, which is the Local Technical Assistance Program. And, you know, Steve will be doing those programs as well. But it's kind of this, yeah, we try to structure it as much as possible. Some of it just has to be, you know, out there in the field.
And so, we should hope for quite a bit of snow in the next month?
Yeah, and also, note, snow is not gravel, too, so there will be, yeah, we'll just have to cross that bridge when we get there.
That was my next question. What are we going to, how is he going to learn how to do gravel roads?
Yeah, if you ask a greater operator, the only experience is by being out there and doing it. I would argue that training is also necessary. We do have a 49ers Training Center, which ironically, the contract, I think now, is taking money out of there. But either way, we will send Steve down to what we call Greater School, which is near Hinckley, and the 49ers have a Training Center down there. We sent the other greater operator, who we've hired in the last couple of years, down there as well this last spring.
Is that in our budget? A line item training in our budget?
Yes.
Yeah, training is definitely a line item, making up for the fact that we no longer, the 49ers no longer put money into that Training Center. That's a, that's a new, this is a new evolving scenario.
And just to add to that as well, it's not just the out-of-county training. We still do have Maintenance 3 greater operators on our staff who have been doing this longer than, I think, Matt and I have been alive. So, there's still the opportunity for our in-house personnel to also assist with, you know, any day-to-day needs, questions, you know. So, we do have a disparity in experience. Some people have been there a very long time, some people are brand-new, and some are brand, brand-new. But there's a lot of opportunities for knowledge to be shared.
Commissioner White?
I would like to address the reason it's, the 49ers in the contract negotiations, we never took advantage of sending somebody because it was not really feasible, the distance, the time. And so, why are the employees continuing to pay for this, this training when they, for years, have not had any time to take, make use of it?
Agree it was not well-used.
Right. Okay, not well-used.
Yeah.
So, I did have a question about that. Are you sticking around for the next part of the discussion?
Oh, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the extension of Curtis Loboda's resignation date to March 3, 2025.
Thank you, Commissioner Nelson. Is there support? Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and support. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, up to Item A.
Okay, so I think we'll get Pat on the line. Yeah, do you have his number? Is he up there? Okay. So, our next item is to take a look at the provided county administrator position profile along with the job description. We are going to get Pat Melvin with DDA on the line, and he'll kind of guide us through the process of reviewing, reviewing the items that he has provided, any edits, additions, subtractions, things that you guys would like to provide him before we can make a final decision and approve the profile.
Good morning.
Good morning, Pat. We've got you on, let's say, on the air. We've got the meeting going live, so you're on the mic.
Wonderful. Good morning, Commissioners. How are you doing today?
Just fine, Pat. Thank you for being with us. Right now, also, is Allison Plummer, who's here to talk about the county administrator position profile and the job description.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. Well, thank you for allowing me to participate remotely this morning.
We're pleased you could be with us.
Allison, did you want to start out, or would you like me to jump into it?
I welcome you to jump right in, Pat.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. Good morning. Hopefully, everybody has had an opportunity to take a look at the draft copy of the profile that we put together. That is going to be kind of the primary document that we're going to be sharing with others as we go forward with the recruitment. A big part of that, obviously, was the interviews, which all of you participated in. We did a total of 18 interviews, including all the Commissioners. We did union representatives. We did the management team, and then we also did the executive assistant. So, basically, I spent a half an hour meeting, talking with them. We had put together kind of a discussion guide, looking into different aspects of leadership. And it was really just an opportunity for individuals to share based on their experience, maybe with, you know, with previous administrators, but to share kind of what we should be looking for in the next individual, and more specifically, what makes a person in the county administrator position successful. So, what came out of those interviews was included in, on Page 9 of the profile, the desired attributes. And so, I think, you know, you're getting a perspective here of what specifically is unique and needed for Cook County. Certainly, some of these attributes may be valuable in other counties, but it was information that came up from those interviews. So, what I am looking to do today is get the profile approved, and I think the first thing that we maybe need to do to move in that direction is to look at the date that we have slated for interviews, because we actually have that included on the last page, Page 10. We talked about final interviews will be held on March 5, 2025, and I just wanted to confirm with you Commissioners, does that Wednesday, March 5, 2025, does that work for all of you to conduct interviews?
I know it works for me. Other Commissioners?
It's a priority barring some sort of health or catastrophic event, yes.
I would agree.
Yeah, I have to read it.
Oh.
But I can get excused. I mean, fingers crossed I can get excused. We'll find out.
Commissioner Sullivan?
Okay.
Okay, it looks, it's good for the majority of us.
Okay, that sounds great.
At least.
Okay, okay. Then with that, I guess I would, at this point, then open it up to Commissioners to, you know, if there is anything regarding the profile that you found to be inaccurate or that you didn't like the wording on, if there are pictures that, you know, you thought weren't, you know, could have been improved upon, anything like that, I'm willing to take your feedback at this point. And then what I'm going to be asking is that you, after we have after we have this discussion, that you approve the profile with the changes. What I will then be doing is going back and making those changes to the profile and then we will jump into posting and then starting to actively recruit individuals for the position. So at this point, I don't know how you'd like to do it, Madam Chair, but if I could just get input on any suggested changes to the draft profile. That would be wonderful.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Pat. One question, is January 15 enough time for the application deadline? In your professional, okay.
Yes, typically what we do is that three, four-week window of time, you know, yeah, you can give people more time, well, then they tend to delay until they put in their application. So I think four weeks is right on target with where we should be. We do find, from past recruitments, you do find people kind of, I don't know if it's they're doing research, but they do wait until closer to the closing date to apply. We find oftentimes, some very qualified people wait until that final couple of days to put it in.
I was just concerned about the holidays, but I think you have a better sense of the market and the process and so I'll trust your judgment there. The only other thing I think, and this is maybe a small thing, but the only other thing I would highly suggest is to include the three charter schools in our educational opportunities. All three are public schools. And I think the diversity of the educational opportunities in the community are a strength and worth noting for recruits.
Oh, definitely, definitely.
And so?
So on page five, correct?
Uh, yes.
Okay.
So that would be Oshkay-Ogomog, which is in Grand Portage, Birch Grove, which is in Tofti, and Great Expectations, which is in the city of Grand Marais.
Okay.
And we can get information to you and work with you to make sure that that is updated.
Yeah, and I would be happy to run this by Rowan or Allison if you'd like to have them make sure that we've got the spelling on some of these different names and everything.
That would be fine.
Happy to provide that.
Wonderful. Great suggestion to include those charter schools. That's exactly what I was looking for, so.
All right, any comments? Commissioner Johnson?
One of the things I didn't see, and maybe I missed it, but as far as tribal relations and being able to be aware of, I didn't see reference to anything like that.
Yeah, and I would think that that would be something that would be really important under communication and collaboration skills.
To at least have
Or under leadership.
Understanding of tribal relations.
Cultural competency. Thank you, Attorney Hicken.
Maybe page eight, core duties or? Or what do you, what's?
I just thought we should, the person needs to have, can't come in blind saying, oh, I've never worked with a different culture or a reservation before. I don't think that would be helpful.
So did you say cultural diversity?
Cultural competency.
Okay.
Cultural competency and/or understanding tribal relations and sovereignty.
Okay. Okay, no, great suggestion.
Page five.
It mentions a little bit, but I think there could be some additional language. Pat, next to where you have cultural education, and it states partnership with local organizations to incorporate Ojibwe language and culture into curriculum reflecting the area's rich indigenous heritage. An additional language suggested by Attorney Hicken, I think would be welcome in that location.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, what page are you?
Those page numbers are different.
I believe it's page five, under educational opportunities. But it's
So your suggestion is
Well, yeah, sorry, Pat. Does I read it again? I think just you did touch on it a little bit and I wanted that to be clear to everyone, but I think probably your I believe it's your page eight, which is our page nine, just the way that the board packet is set up under core duties of the position would probably be the most appropriate location for
I agree.
the added language.
Oh.
Commissioner Stone, you had your hand up.
I know. Thank you. Hi, Pat. We all survived the conference, did you?
Yes, it was a good, yes, it was a good time, a great time to connect and learn what's going on, yes.
Yes, it was.
Thank you.
Under minimum qualifications, education and experience, and I don't know if this is a matter of somatics or not, minimum of 10 years. I was wondering if we wanted to maybe be a little bit less in that, maybe eight to 10 years? I don't know what everybody thinks. Kind of makes it sound, makes it sound like you have to have this minimum. And I guess I'm looking at it as a little more flexible.
Great point to bring up. You know, I would typically recommend that we stay on the on the lower end, simply because you're going to have plenty of opportunity to, you know, weed out individuals. But if you have somebody who maybe has six years and they've been doing a wonderful job, would you consider a person? You know, I think you probably would. So obviously, as we get into the process, you're going to have a wide array of experience and education, knowledge. You're going to have the opportunity to select who are those top ones. We tend to discourage telling somebody they shouldn't apply. We would rather have many people apply and then, you know, choose the best of that group versus have people read a position announcement and say, you know what, I don't think I qualify. I'm not even going to take a chance and apply. But I would look to Allison, if you have any thoughts on on that, the job description probably does say 10 years, I would assume.
Yeah, the 10 years of minimum experience, what was in there previously and was not adjusted. But I would agree, I think I think 10 years seems a little bit much when we could have flexibility in finding the right candidate with less than 10, especially given, like you said, that the candidates and who we choose to proceed forth with are at our discretion.
Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thanks again, Pat. And we did discuss this a little bit when we approved this job description. And it was suggested that we knock it down to five and I'm very amenable to that. And, but if six is more appropriate, or I have no idea, but I think it's important to cast a wide net and then, as you said, we can filter out those based on their experience levels. We decided just to go with what was written because we were going to relook at the job description after we got these desired attributes and see if that influenced the job description at all and then just amend it there. So I concur and I think we'd have to vote on that. We should probably discuss more. One other thing I wanted to point out is our recorder is no longer an elected official. Our recorder is appointed and so that changes the tree a little bit. That's on, I'm sorry, that's on page seven.
Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Mills. I totally agree with you on both of your recommendations.
So how does the board feel about moving to five years for experience? So Jenny, yes, Commissioner Johnson?
I'm a a little nervous about five years, no county government experience. To me, actual government experience is higher priority than working at a business and you've managed 150 people. You have some skills, you have some business administration personnel skills, but you don't have government. And government is a whole different ball of wax. So I would just, I'm okay with moving down from 10. But to me, specific governmental experience is a huge thing.
I would certainly support that. How do others feel?
I would too.
She wants to see.
Actually, if you look at the previous page under desired attributes, that's where the knowledge, skills and abilities piece comes in. Playing into the other kind of minimum qualifications, minimum qualifications usually specifically education experience. But if you look underneath the operational and functional expertise, a leader with a strong understanding of county operations and applicable Minnesota statutes and laws, county government experience preferred. Again, we have discretion when looking at the applications.
I just, I'm sorry.
And we do call out in the desired attributes that we would prefer government experience preferred, county government experience preferred under operational and functional expertise.
Yeah.
But
I get that. And we're closing applications on January 15 and we have nobody with governmental experience. And then we say, oh, we need somebody, we hire somebody. I don't know. That's, call me a skeptic, but I can see that happening. So
Okay.
That's, I'm just raising that concern that I think it's a huge deal to have government experience. I don't know how
I do, but I, but Allison, you brought that up, that it's government experience preferred. When we're looking at the applications, we can make that decision.
Commissioner Sullivan? So what should happen, what would happen if we get no applicants with any sort of government experience?
Well, at that point, you know, certainly if the board was not interested in any of the candidates that applied, then typically what we would recommend is that we look to maybe hold off for a period of time to allow individuals' work situations to change and that we would then repost and go out again looking for candidates.
Well, we've got our interim superintendent who'd like to get back to his real life. So that's a consideration here.
And that
We can cross that bridge when we get to it, but I have another question. It's for the application. Finalists will be selected on February 11 and interview is on March 5. Who selects the finalists?
You as the board will select the finalists. Once we have the applications in, what I will do is I will review them. I will remove anybody who doesn't meet minimum qualifications and I will provide the top candidates to the board. The top candidates will be doing a video interview. They'll be doing an information disclosure statement and they'll be doing a personality assessment. That information will be shared, we can advance with the board so that you are more informed about the applicants. And from there, you will decide who you wish to invite in for an interview.
This is a question to Commissioner Sullivan. So do we have a public meeting on the 11th of February to go, to do this? How does this work?
Yes. I believe, I believe that is a county board meeting where you will be selecting. And what we will do is we will be referring to candidates by numbers and not names because at that point in the process, the names of applicants is confidential. So I will provide you with information in advance. We'll be talking about candidates by numbers and once you select them to come in for an interview, that's when their name becomes public information and I will provide you with a brief bio on each of the finalists that you select to come in for an interview.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Pat.
Great questions.
Yes, and Pat, after the candidates have been chosen, let's say we have three candidates, then I remember that last time we had a public invite for the public to meet them. Is that still on board?
Yes, you can certainly, we haven't finalized that, but yes, you can have a public reception where members of the public can chat with the finalists and share feedback with you as the board to assist you in making that decision.
And I think to our, Commissioner Mills, it was two administrators ago that was public. We didn't have it in public the last time due to COVID.
Oh.
So it's one of the different times.
My memory is actually we decided not to do that, not because of COVID, but because of the decision-making process and having, say, one person from the public show up and having influence versus, you know, 700 of our districts, you know, 700 people show up, it was just a, an unequal way versus the representatives from the districts making that decision. I'd also heard feedback, I thought, from professionals that it was no longer best practice. But just that some boards still like to do that and maybe I'm wrong there, but it sounded like it was fraught.
As an employee at that time, I would, I'd say, I would not recommend you continue that process. It needs to be a public process. We need to involve all staff. Opportunity, the public opportunity to meet this person that's going to be coming into our community, into our building. And it shouldn't be a decision only by this board. That's just
And I would say, I would support that in that when we look at hiring other major positions in the community, there's usually a public meet and greet, that type of thing, so that people have an opportunity to weigh in. So I would feel comfortable with that.
And Commissioner Mills, to the, your statement that it's fraught, living in Cook County is fraught with situations and so we do well, you do well, we'll deal with it. And I believe that our people and our employees in particular should have a chance to get an impression. But it doesn't mean that we are, we, I, will be easily swayed, easily swayed. I want to hear other people's impressions because sometimes people see things that I totally miss, you know. So there's value in that. And this is, this is someone who will be the county head. This is like a really important person. And the more people that get to be part of this because we we're a democracy, so the better. And if one person shows up, king for a day. But other than that, I believe we make the offer. We have that opportunity out there.
Can you, I wasn't involved two times ago, could you kind of inform us on what that process looked like and how it went and just turnout and feedback that you received, Commissioner Stone?
We had the public greet and meet over at East Bay when they still had their nice reception area. And actually, at that time, Commissioner Gary Gamble and his wife provided goodies.
And actually, at that time, Commissioner Gary Gamble and his wife provided goodies. And we had three candidates and they all circulated and they all participated in the goodies that Commissioner Gamble provided. It was for a couple hours. And, and then we came to our board meeting and discussed. No, first of all, we discussed without a board meeting about what we thought would be after the meet and greet to get response from the public. And then we privately met and talked about who impressed us. And then we came before the board to say, we have selected.
We have selected for the final interviews who we will find? Okay.
And then he was hired.
And please correct me if I'm wrong, but I think all of that needs to be public. There can't be a private selection. We need to discuss it publicly.
Right, and that's.
Correct. And that's what we typically do when we're looking for public input, is we don't ask, who's your first choice, who's your second choice? What we ask them to respond to is what strengths would this person bring to the organization? How would this person fit in with your organization? Because ultimately, it is the commissioners that are making the decision. And it is the, the public and staff who attend this public reception, they are providing input. So we prefer not to, you know, pit one against the other because obviously the commissioners are going to have access to more information than those who are attending the public reception.
That's helpful. Any other comments or suggestions? Director Plummer?
One suggestion, after I had reviewed this that I sent to Pat, and I would look forth to you if it, if it would be beneficial. Under the recreation and events, I don't know if it would be worthwhile to add a reference to, you know, we have a local YMCA facility, Arrowhead Center for the Arts, in terms of other community activities.
I think that would be great.
I mean, I think it's very unique that we have a YMCA and those opportunities here.
I think that's a great suggestion.
Was North House Folk School?
Oh, yeah.
Listed? I don't recollect.
It's referenced, yes, on the recreation and activities. North House Folk School hosts workshops in the popular unplugged music series, da-da-da.
Right. Well, Pat, I think you've done a great job, not only of capturing the suggestions that, that we've made and that all of our staff who were interviewed have made, but you've done a great job of capturing our community and all that Cook County has to offer. And hopefully, we'll have multiple individuals that will be interested in applying for this position. Commissioner Mills?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The other we might want to explicitly put in there unless I missed it is just our local radio station. That's a very local, you know, it's a very unique organization that we have in our community.
Great, I will certainly, yeah, certainly add that. Okay.
Madam Chair? Where did we settle again on experience, where it says minimum of 10 years? Did we settle on five years?
I think we were in agreement five years.
Five years, okay.
Commissioner White?
However, if somebody shows up and they have four years and they are outstanding, you bet. I mean, it's.
That's why we screen.
We do a little, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the county administrator position profile amended to the five years experience as well as the, or I'm sorry, the county administrator profile as amended through our comments here. And then the job description in regards to five years experience.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, everybody, for all their work. This is a really big task, a really important task. And I think we've worked very well.
Thank you. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you very much for your time this morning. And we will get it out there and I will start doing active recruitment and providing updates in terms of the number of candidates. And hopefully, yes, come January 15th, we'll have a wonderful pool to select from. So any questions throughout the process, I'm always available to answer or get an update from. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Pat. Take care.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye. All right, we'll move on to our administrator updates.
All right. Item A, amendment to the LELS agreement, replace the pay schedule. And so, this one is just, the LELS agreement was approved prior to the change in pay tables that we had. Looks like he hung up first.
All right.
Sorry. No problem. So, following the conversation around the change in spread between 250 and 260 as well as the creation of a 270 on our pay table. And the amendment that Attorney Hicken has created for us is so that we could do that and attach to those pay tables. So we're just, for consistency across pay tables, it doesn't impact any of the union membership. It's at the upper end of that pay schedule, pay table. But we're incorporating the agreement so there's consistency across all of our agreements.
Any questions or comments? If not, I'd like to make a motion to approve the attached amendment, number one, to the LELS agreement, which updates the pay schedules incorporated into the agreement with agreed-upon pay schedules. Is there support?
I have support.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B?
Item B, same document, same process for the CCA agreement. Again, just replacing the old pay schedule to reflect the changes that the board approved with the space between 250 and 260 as well as the creation of a 270 pay table. In the pay table.
Questions or comments?
I'm, I'm sorry, I spaced this on the first one. Was there amendment we need to do regarding VIBA? Or is that? There will be. Okay. But it's not. Gotcha. Here now. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve the amendment number one to the CCA agreement.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Item C, approval of the labor contract with the Local 49er, Local 49. This is the one that Administrator Yorki just didn't have time to finish up and get to. So this, this contract is the agreed terms. The highlights of it are, again, the COLA, that's the same across all bargaining units, the increase in VIBA from 1,200 to 1,500 a year in '25 and up to 1,800 a year in 2026. It also includes the transfer of 20 cents per hour from the training center to contributions to the pension, which we referenced earlier today. And the understanding that I have from working with, with the union rep, Dan Manick, is that the amount that we were contributing to the training center, we just weren't using and returning. We just, more training, more money was going there than we had capacity to do training. And so they thought this was appropriate. No real change in financial impact for the county. It's 20 cents we had been applying to the training center, but instead they negotiated for it to go to the, to the pension.
Commissioner White?
Would you explain what VIBA is? What are the real words?
Allison, do you have the acronym?
I walked out the door and I immediately turned back. Like, do you believe me?
Healthcare spin.
I have a mom voice, but I'll still come up. Still usually pretty loud enough. So the VIBA is a benefit that all full-time employees get because it is paired with someone who enrolls in one of our health plans. It stands for Voluntary Employees Beneficiary Association. It's easy to say VIBA. So basically, it acts as a health savings account. However, only the employer, per IRS requirements, can contribute to it. So if we have a full-time employee who is eligible for one of our healthcare plans, they enroll, they're a policyholder, then the county will pay into contribute those amounts. Right now, it's 1,200 going to 1,500, going to 1,800 into that account. Again, acts as a health savings account. It is retained by the employee even after they leave. It rolls over from year to year and accumulates if they don't use it. And can only be used for qualifying medical expenses.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Other questions? Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I have a question. So in this agreement, we have our job descriptions. And there's one job description that has not been board approved. Is it good practice or customary to include in a labor contract for a job that has not been board approved?
That is a good question. Which description, I guess I would ask?
It's at the end, the environmentalist specialist? That's the new position they want? Yep.
Page 45.
I think we do have that position already. It's just.
We have a temporary, part-time summer position.
So this is seasonal environmental worker, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I think we do have that.
We do have a part-time. Because they can do, they can hire temporary positions without board approval. Departments can do that. Departments have done that.
Okay.
This is, makes it seem like, it's not board approved. This is a permanent position.
So you're saying the current environmental worker is temporary?
The environmental specialist position referenced there is Tia Parks' position.
Right.
It is still going through the review process.
I'm on the, no, page 40, yeah. Maybe not. It was, I was on the wrong page there.
So Commissioner, 45, did you say?
Yes, I was on page 43. I'm just.
Seasonal maintenance worker, mower?
Yeah, that's the other one that's not board approved. But I just, it just makes me wonder. I don't know, I've never been involved in negotiations before in labor contracts. And to me, that struck me that why would you put an unapproved job description in a labor contract? I'm asking. It just seemed backwards to me because I have no experience.
Yeah. I'm gonna rely on Allison and Commissioner Mills and White for this one. It was a tentative agreement when we brought it forward. So if you guys have the detail.
And I did notify Dan Manick when I sent the job descriptions to be included in the, in the contract, that that one technically is an approved description. It just has not gone through the board, the full approval process, which is just fine. I mean, things are constantly changing with job descriptions, job grades. And there are things that will, with those items, that will become out of date over the next couple of years. And that's just fine for it to be the old approved job description to still be referenced in, in the current contract. And one of the things about that job is it follows mainly the state statute requirements for what an ag inspector does. And that, so there's not going to be much change anyways for that position. But that is, it's still technically an approved job description. And just like any of our other jobs, it'll still go through the process. That won't be halted. We don't need to have an addendum or an amendment to the contract to reference the new job description.
Thank you. Other questions or clarifications?
So have we, has the board officially approved this job at some point?
Yeah, all jobs have, all jobs have job descriptions that were approved in the past. It's just, just the newer, the newer revised job description that would go through the DDA process. It's still going through that process.
Okay. So this is where my confusion comes in, and I apologize. It wasn't until 6 o'clock this morning, I'm reviewing my board saying, it says NA.
Not approved.
Yes.
Not approved.
And I'm like, wait a minute. You're not approved. That I just noticed. So is this the, was there a change? May.
This is the current job description that, and I didn't look at dates. So I was just pulling up the, the job or the contract. I'm having a hard time finding words today, apparently. So that is the current approved job description for whatever date it was. So we have job descriptions that span back again several years. So whenever that job was last reviewed and approved, brought to the board for approval, that's the job description that's referenced right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
That clarifies, but that's what, I still think it should say board approved, even if it was 2016, whatever should be on there. It shouldn't say it's not approved. So that, just clarification that.
Sure.
That's, if you're putting it into a contract, I mean, a labor contract.
What about a watermark that just says draft?
Well, this one's current.
This is current.
This is current, but if there is a new one, should we include that?
Curious what the practice has been just for contract maintenance going forward. Do we, as positions get changed and reviewed and reapproved, those changes reapproved by the board? We don't amend the contract with the Local 49ers, do we?
No, no, we don't usually amend things going forward. It's just currently as-is, effective when we provide the information to them. That was the, the status of that job description. And I just want to note too, in looking, as I've gone through this review process and we look at old job descriptions, current job descriptions, the dates are like all over the place. So that's probably just what happened in this one. Even partly through the job description review process right now, the dates that we used to have were like date prepared and date finalized or something. There were two dates, they didn't even reference the board approved date. So that was something too that we're now adding to the board, or to, excuse me, again, words, tricky, to the job description. So that's probably just those inconsistency with dates that I've seen through the various years, especially if you have different staff who've come in and I'm going to do this differently with the job descriptions. It just might not have gotten captured. But I agree, usually there should be a date in there. So it shows when it was last board approved.
Okay, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the 2025 through 2026 labor contract with the Local 49ers.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
No support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starley. We have a motion and support. Any further discussion?
So are we not going to put in board, we're not going to find the date when this job description was approved? We're just going to leave it as not approved? As it says on here, this is the job title, seasonal environmental worker. And what Commissioner Johnson brought up, it says board approved, NA. Are we going to take that NA out and just write yes?
I mean, I think we can. I mean, yeah, go ahead.
To have it be consistent with other?
Maybe the other ones, I don't know. I did, I could've missed it before and the other two, I'm just saying.
Last chance to cause chaos, okay?
I know. Why not? Why not?
I'm curious if Attorney Hickon or maybe Allison have some information they could provide on the potential impact of having that, say, N-A. Is there, is there a risk associated with that that we need to be concerned about? And if not, um, would it wait until another amendment that we know is coming up related to, um, family medical?
Paid family.
Paid family medical leave is coming up. We could flag it and make other corrections at the time.
Doesn't N-N dash A usually being not applicable?
Yeah.
Rather than not approved? Yeah. So just, so it's not saying it's not approved. It just says it's, we don't have that information right now, I guess.
Is what it was saying to me, that's all.
All right.
Attorney Hickon?
Just so I can further complicate things. No, no, I'm hoping that this helps to resolve the issue. Um, I, what's important here is how these job descriptions are incorporated into the agreement. What, what does the agreement say about this attachment? And how should we pay attention to it? What impact does it have? And, um, so what I look at is I go back to Article Two, which incorporates the job descriptions. And Section Two of Article Two talks about Appendix A and the job description, position descriptions. It says, um, two things. During the term of this contract, the Cook County Administrator will work with the union members and highway department supervisors to update the position descriptions. A second thing it says is, in the event that the county and the union are unable to agree as to the inclusion or exclusion of a newer modified job class, the issue shall be submitted to the Bureau of Mediation Services. So, um, A, the contract already, uh, the contract already contemplates that these position descriptions will be changed and, um, and that both parties will be involved in that process. And B, if they can't agree as to how those job descriptions are changed, then there's a method here at the Bureau of Mediation Services to resolve that. The other thing I would say about that little piece of that single job description is that it's probably not material to anything in this contract. It's not gonna like go back and invalidate the entire agreement because that little piece, um, is missing, especially because it seems like it would be recorded elsewhere and easily looked up that this job description was approved on this date.
Okay.
And that can always be brought in. All of that said, you could certainly modify your motion to say with the correct, you know, add the date of, um, board approval of this job description into Appendix A. That's my input for you. I stand for questions.
I don't, I don't have a question, but I really do appreciate having you here at the table to help me, um, process this kind of information because I think it's important that we don't just say, oh, that's close enough, or probably no big deal. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to ask my questions and talk this through and providing legal expertise. So thank you for that.
You bet.
Other questions for Attorney Hickon or anyone else? So we have a motion and support. One last time, any questions? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have three contracts all finalized. All right. Administrative updates.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, first, I'll just start with a conversation related to how we've negotiated COLA on contracts before that we've had. Director Plummer brought it to our attention that the way language has us implementing COLA across the pay table on every step creates some discrepancies in the steps. So as you all are aware, um, different, try to get to a pretty standard seven percent increase from grade over grade. As you move from step to step, that is consistent across the pay table of four percent. The way that we've been applying that is, um, creating very small changes that as you, they compound themselves over, you get to very small percent changes, uh, up to one percent, or a decimal of a percent. And so where that leaves us is just wanting to address it for everyone's awareness and flag it as something that as we negotiate going forward, as opposed to negotiating a COLA across everyone, to maintain that four percent increase, a different approach would be to negotiate the base pay on every step, negotiate the COLA at every base pay for every grade, and then maintain that four percent across the pay table. I think right now, we've done this for a couple of contracts, and I think the biggest we've seen is like a 3.95 percent, um, up or down. And so it's, it's pretty minimal, but as we do contract over contract, it's something that if we do wanna maintain that four percent, that's a, a different way that the board could look at negotiating contracts. Aside from that, uh, we've been talking a lot about short-term space needs. Facilities Director and PHHS Director, um, as well as myself and commissioners, a handful of commissioners have visited different locations, uh, just to see what's available for space needs. Commercial space in Lutzen, the hub, uh, the space in Great Expectations School, uh, are all some of the places that we've looked at. We also worked with Brooklyn Sarder Facilities Director to kinda review some space in the basement that we think is, is underutilized and has some potential. We brought all of those items and information back to the building committee, uh, and the building committee supports us kinda exploring further the, the downstairs space in the courthouse. And so tentatively, uh, what we're looking at there is, is having some architectural plans put together as to how we could reutilize, uh, the break room and some storage components to add space for additional staff. The way that we've, this by no means would meet all of our space needs. Uh, the way that we've looked at prioritizing this is both PHHS and HR, uh, have staff that don't have space allocated for them. So it's, it's not a fix for everything in PHHS, and it's not a fix for soil and water is another example, or, or, you know, all the different ones that we've talked about at length before. Um, but these are, I think PHHS is at a, if they're fully staffed, they're at about four staff over what they have room offices to put them. Uh, and then currently, the halftime FTE, uh, for HR doesn't have a dedicated office. And then, as you know, on the, on the 2025 budget, the additional FTE, no, no space for that person as well. And so, um, we'll continue to look at that. Uh, there's a potential of unused professional contract services that were in the, uh, facilities budget that we could use to have those architectural drawings put together for the basement. And so we'll, we'll bring that forward again when we have, uh, a broader concept, but that's where we're at now. Uh, the next one I'd update you on is BKV. Uh, our design team, which is made up of representation from the sheriff's office, emergency management, facilities, administration, and representation from the board, uh, had our second round of meetings headed up by, by BKV Design Group. And they have architectural advantage out of Duluth there, as well as now our, uh, construction manager at risk, Johnson Wilson, the contract that was approved. And, um, it was a really good, good meeting. They had, uh, drawings for us to, to look at and talk through operational processes for folks at the sheriff's office and made changes for us on the fly there. And they'll come back with a, another revision, but just to say that I think the process is going well. I really appreciate having, uh, Johnson Wilson, the construction manager at risk, in the room. They, uh, gave some insight into see how they, how they see the costs that BKV and has, has provided us with. So there was some, some numbers adjusted there. And the last one I'll talk about is ClearGov. We did reach out and get access to our, uh, ClearGov account, and we can see that operational budget data was entered. Uh, it's not fully up to date with the revenue and expense changes. It's been a while. James was the one that had access to that and had been working on that late into the summer, into the fall, but things have, have obviously changed since then. It does not show personnel or capital budget, um, but it does have a, a breakdown of operational budgets by fund and shows expected revenue versus expected expenses, but again, not, not up to date where we are. So just kind of in summary, I, I would say it, it has the potential to be a nice tool to share information with the public, uh, but requires additional work before it would be, you know, accurate and informative. And that's a, a year-over-year contract. So if that's software that we would like to keep access to or retain our account sometime, likely in January, that's something the board will, will need to make a decision on again. I had a brief conversation with Auditor Powers about it. I don't wanna, wanna speak for him, but I think he sees that the, you know, the value in that really lined with administration and the administration's office versus a tool that his office needs. So I, I think as we're having this conversation about whether or not we, we want this, continue this software subscription, um, just having that piece of information that it's gonna be most likely appropriate for whoever's next county administrator to be operating that software.
And just, what is the cost of this yearly use of this software?
I'll get us a, a due quote. Brady, do you remember what we paid?
It's just over twenty thousand. Yeah. I remember the specific.
The, the benefit clearly is for the public to see in understandable means how our budget is utilized. And so personally, I think it's a really valuable tool, and we'll have to look to our new county administrator to, um, you know, so, see how he or she moves forward with that.
That's all I have.
Any questions for Administrator Watkins? All right. Well, we will move on then to conveyance of county-owned land to the HRA. And we want to thank Jason Hale for his patience this morning, uh, should I say, this afternoon in waiting for this item. Anna Hamilton was also here, but, um, had to leave. And, um, so if you refer back to our last couple of meetings, this was brought forward, first of all, as just an informational item, that there had been, um, an opportunity for the HRA to, um, help Hamilton Habitat move forward with some infrastructure costs through the application at IRR. And this particular parcel has been looked at, um, over the years in a number of capacities, but within the last year by the HRA. And I just asked Jason to maybe speak a little bit to, um, what the HRA was looking at, the wetland delineation, and what you see as an opportunity for this parcel.
Thank you, Chair Commissioners. Uh, first, actually, I think it's, I wanna start by, um, acknowledging Attorney Hickon and I have been talking in there, we did not get the legal description we were hoping for in time for this meeting. Um, I'm sure people are very busy at the end of the year trying to cram things in, just like I think we, we are, I know that. So with that said, I think it's, we're probably going to have to wait for formal approval of this resolution until January seventh, is that the right meeting?
Yep, that would be the next one.
So January seventh is our organizational meeting? It's not the first board meeting? So that would be the fourteenth, which is the day before the application is due.
Yes, and in fact, the application is due on the tenth.
Ah.
Uh, for IRR. However, so there's a lot of things to throw you. After talking with Anna Hamilton, who was here, like you said, Sharon had to leave, uh, we are going to, the HRA is still going to apply for IRR funding to help with infrastructure, but this round, we're going to apply for the homestead lots that they own on the west side of town on Eleventh Avenue. We were looking at doing the prop, subject property, uh, just up the hill here, but time constraints, other reasons, we decided to pivot. Uh, and she and, uh, Hamilton Habitat already have those lots, of course, and they're ready to build in 2025. Um, so I have an application I'll be bringing tomorrow to my board, a request to be able to submit that application to IRR in time for the tenth deadline. So there's a little pressure off. We still want to get this done, and in particular, before I'm done at the HRA, that was the ambition here, to make sure that all the i's are dotted, t's crossed. So all of that paperwork for the HRA side is done, of course. This is not going to change materially at all, uh, with the exception of the legal description. So if you would like, I'm happy to answer any questions or go through the project, et cetera, now. Um, I'm, I'm not sure if I will be here at the meeting, whenever the next meeting is, the fourteenth. So I'm happy to stand for that now, so that you know what we're talking about. I know some of us won't be here on the fourteenth, um, but I, I'm happy to do so, if that makes sense.
Commissioner Johnson?
When will the description be available?
Commissioner Johnson, if I had control of the survey, I'd be pretty happy. Um, the, uh, we were told, uh, this morning at eight or something, that probably by the end of the day. But the surveyor had our dates mixed up, thinking the deadline was the HRA board meeting tomorrow, not the seventeenth. And so they are, you know, scrambling to wrap it up. They have the, essentially, we're talking about approximately two acres of that parcel on the northwest, you know, corner on Creachville Road. But we don't have the precise legal description. So again, nothing else would change, just the exact property we're talking about.
So my next question is to Attorney Hickon then. And we approve other things, saying, you know our intentions. And you review it, and if you sign off on it, it goes forward. What would be the problem with doing that with this?
So my hesitation with this is it's a property transaction. Property transactions are so dependent upon a legal description. And this resolution, um, might be, need to be a recorded document. The, the deed at least would need to be a recorded document. Your decision, um, should include the property description. I don't know.
I, I think the risk is just too high in this case. It's, it's not just a modification of language, it's, um, the property description, so.
Thank you for the clarification.
Commissioner Mills?
What's the, what's the deadline for the next round then? Since IRR funds are for the homestead, for instance, next round for this property or parcel?
That depends on two things, Commissioner. One is presuming there are funds left for the next round, uh, which, the IRR housing grants, as you can imagine, has become more popular, uh, because there aren't a lot of resources to do just this, like infrastructure funding is very limited. Having said that, and a little asterisk, the state did approve last year, the legislative session, eight million dollars for public infrastructure for Greatest Minnesota, I like to call it. Um, and we, that's another opportunity, but particularly of IRR, uh, they may allocate all of the funding this first round. They tried to do two rounds for their funding for the year. But of course, like everything else, there's a set budget, and then they see how many asks they get in, so to speak. If there is funds available for a second round, uh, they would likely aim for fall. IRR is a little bit of a moving target with their board meetings because their board is made up of all the representatives at the legislature, so it's a little harder to pin them down schedule-wise, especially during sessions. So it's very likely what happened this last year is, um, it moved, uh, but the fall, September was when it opened up, uh, and then the deadline was November, but the housing grant wasn't on the agenda in November. So I would suspect it would be October, November of 2025, in time for, I'll say, a 2026 construction, which is what Hamilton Habitat is targeting for this property.
Commissioner Mills?
And, um, okay, so, okay. I, I'm also just curious about, um, the process here.
And, okay, so, okay. I'm also just curious about the process here, and we probably have authority to just do this. What I'm curious about is when the city conveyed the property for the view, there was a public hearing? Is that, or what was that whole? There was quite a large turnout at City Hall. And I think that was in regards to the sale of public property. And so their transferring of, is that a requirement, or maybe the HRA has to do it, but we don't have to do it because we're giving it to public?
So there's a couple different things at issue in that question. So if a property's going for less than $15,000, if we're valuing it at less than $15,000, we don't have the same public bidding and public hearing process required for the transaction. And there is also another statute section, which I referenced in the, in the resolution, which, which it talks about transactions between municipal subdivisions. And so the reason I'm including that is because I believe it can be interpreted to, oh, and what it says about transactions between municipal subdivisions is that all the public bidding and public hearing requirements are.
So we don't have to do it for HRA?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Commissioner, we would-
I think it's good to rely on both the value and this other subsection because it hasn't been interpreted by the courts, so.
And to that point, as Attorney Hickon said, the HRA would hold a public hearing once we would actually determine that we'd sell, sell the property for, for the dollar. So, and you know, that's, we, we potentially wouldn't have to based on what Attorney Hickon is saying with regard to interpretation, but often we do, just as a matter of course. So that's another reason that, again, you know, we would like to approve this as soon as we can, but if we are waiting on the precise, and this parcel is a little weird as well. I don't know if you've looked at it, but it, it goes up and it straddles the right of way on both sides. So it's kind of a, you know, for that reason, it's, it's maybe prudence to have the precise legal description. I, I don't want to wait because it'd be great to button this up, but we can't, we can't rush art, I guess, with surveying, so we want to make sure we get that together. But again, my intent is if there are questions just generally about this, I'm, I'm at your disposal to address them.
Commissioner Mills.
When you say the right, are you saying the west and the north sides?
It's, so this parcel ID is bifurcated by Creechville Road. So I believe the horse park is also within the same parcel.
Oh, oh yeah, the whole, okay. It's 14 acres as listed.
Yeah.
Gotcha. So we got to, okay.
So it's a little more complicated than the typical, like we're subdividing a lot in half sort of thing. And it might be, the, the surveyor is using, I don't know if you're familiar with the parcel rule, there's a, there's a, how to describe this, the eastern side, Gunflint Trail, if you go south toward the ball field, right north of the ball field, there's a runoff sort of creek.
Mm-hmm.
That's being used-
Nature Boy Creek.
Yeah, yeah. That's being used as the southern terminus of the parcel in question. So that's being the boundary. The, the surveyor wanted to leave buffer there for maintenance and for the ball field. So that's the general area we're talking about from that creek up to the Gunflint Trail, two acres worth.
Great. That's, I think, an excellent way to divide it. And it potentially allows continual access from the school land down past the ball fields, past this parcel to the, to Creechville Road there.
It looks, Commissioner, it looks like there'd be sufficient room to do that, yes.
So a question I have is should we consider a special meeting on the 7th following our organizational meeting to get this done?
Well, Sheriff, if the intent of that is to get it done in time for the January 10th deadline, one, that is very appreciated. Two, it's probably not necessary because we don't have enough information yet to submit a compelling application about this. We need information about cost projections for utility, et cetera. We have that for homestead, but that's part of the reason we deferred to put this to a 2026 project. Hamilton Habitat just doesn't have the bandwidth right now to do all of that.
All right. I just wanted to make sure if we could get it in, we could. All right.
And maybe this is not a question for Jason, but a question I think we should at least be just thinking or talking about is just the wetlands on there. Is it to the projects' benefit to include those? Or would there be an advantage for the county to retain those? Or, and I have, I don't even know the factors involved, if it's wetland credits or, or access or anything, but I just thought it might be worth discussing.
Commissioner, I think the short answer to your question is it's probably, it depends on how the parcel is delineated, but it's probably to the benefit of the project to include them because there are minimum requirements for lot sizes. So if you try to carve all of them out, then you're left with an irregular shape that is not going to, you know, work for zoning. On top of that, you can have wetlands in your backyard. And, you know, obviously if they're, they're going to have to probably impact some, the question is just is it the minimis, minimis amount and they're required to get, or they're required to get wetland credits. And there is a wetland bank that I believe Mr. Laboda owns that they can tap into if they need to. But the western, northwestern most part of that parcel is you probably, I don't know if you have the map in front of you or not, but that's the primary area. And my, the idea is to just capture that as much as possible and go west to the road.
Unless it rains.
Then the whole hill has a problem.
Until it rains.
These are homes on stilts. Didn't you hear that?
That would be advantageous for sure.
Forty-five feet tall, yes. Yeah.
Oh, golly. All right. Well, we thank you for your time and explanation, and we will make this happen. It's important to our community. And you have very strong support on the board.
Good. Thank you. I think there's another item. I'm just going to stay here if that's okay.
There is. Yep. So before we get to that item, I just wanted to share a few remarks because this may be the last meeting that our executive director for HRA is at. And so on behalf of the Cook County community, we want to extend our heartfelt gratitude to your exceptional work as our first executive director of our newly established HRA. Your leadership, dedication, and vision have been invaluable in tackling our community's most significant and longstanding challenge, housing. From the outset, you brought a really clear understanding to the complexities of our housing need. By developing a strategic plan grounded in data and survey information, you laid a strong foundation for progress. And your efforts have gone far beyond planning as you began implementing real tangible solutions that are going to benefit people who are residents today and residents in the future. Your work has made a lasting impact from apartments in Grand Marais to stick-built and modular to single and multifamily, family housing opportunities in Tofti. You've demonstrated a deep commitment to ensuring housing ops, options are accessible, they're varied, and they're sustainable. Your support of Hamilton Habitat and the creation of small affordable homes reflects your ability to collaborate with partners and identify innovative solutions that we need here in Cook County. Housing has been a decades-old challenge in the county, and your leadership has given us hope, direction, and meaningful action. And you've set a very high standard for your predecessor. While the challenges remain, your contributions have brought us closer to a future where everyone in the county has a place to call home. We thank you for your service, your passion, your humor, your commitment to critical work in this area, and your efforts have not gone unnoticed. You've made a real difference in the lives of many people, and we wish you well.
Thank you very much.
Our sincere gratitude. Auditor Powers.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's take-
A break.
A break.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Sorry, you weren't Tim Nelson, so it didn't hit me right away. All right. We'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll finish up. Welcome back, everyone, to our Cook County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting.
Apartments.
We are now on item number 11. Auditor Treasurer Powers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So asking you today to approve a resolution that will obligate our final state, our remaining state and local fiscal recovery funds that have not yet been obligated. There's a requirement to do that by the end of the year in order to keep these funds and not have to send them back. So you actually approved this use back on November 26th for $135,015.36 to go to the HRA for the programs, three areas of need, the Norris-Cogan housing development, the energy envelope improvement program, and to ensure the rents at 11 units of the Gunflint View Apartments, that they remain at the 60% of the area median income, and to approve the use of 200,000 of the funds for the North Shore Waste Transfer Station architectural fees. And this resolution gives some background to the American Recovery Fund program and this portion of it, the state and local fiscal recovery funds, and, and some of the background of how these things are used in general and how we came to this type of use. So I see the two recipients of the funds are here. If you have any questions for them or for me.
I'd just like to make a remark that under item A, the way it's written, it says approved by resolution to obligate 135,000 to the HRA, but it does not include 200,000 to the North Shore Waste.
Exactly. It doesn't, but it's in the summary below.
Correct.
And it's in the res-
In the resolution.
Yeah.
Any questions or comments?
Commissioner Sullivan?
Yes, Commissioner.
This was brought to my attention with a phone call from a taxpayer. And so I missed this. I was thinking differently. But we are essentially going to subsidize 11 units. Taxpayers will subsidize the rents at seven units, or 11 units of the Gunflint View Apartments.
Commissioner, no, not exactly. And actually, this is a good time for an update because the, the three projects or programs that Auditor Powers outlined were the three that we originally proposed, subject to the amount of the money that the county board determined to allocate to the HRA. It is, the amount is reduced from what was possible. And so in fact, the Gunflint View, I'm bringing a resolution to my board tomorrow to use other funds that the HRA has to assist with that. This SLFRF funds would be for Norris-Cogan and for the envelope program only. $100,000 tomorrow, the resolution for the HRA is 100,000 will be used as match for the IRR application we're submitting in January for Norris-Cogan, and then the 35 and change would be the envelope program.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Commissioner Mills?
So the Norris-Cogan will have the 60% AMI?
No, sorry, Commissioner. The Norris-Cogan project is the up-to-12-unit single-family homes. Those will all be for sale to income-qualified, long-term residents. Those will all be for sale to income-qualified, long-term residents who are working in the county. So that's a separate, entirely separate project.
Other questions? Hearing or seeing none, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this, but as per Director, can't even think of his name anymore. He's not even gone.
Director Hale.
Director Hale stated that there will not be any monies going towards the Gunflint View Apartments.
So I'm trying to see where that is stated in the resolution.
Under summary, or this was?
I'm just looking at the resolution, so we're just asking for a motion, and it's not in the resolution.
Oh.
Yeah, so maybe amend the resolution to say, approve this resolution including use of $200,000 for North Shore Waste Recovery-
North Shore Waste and then-
And $135,000, 016-
For the HRA.
For HRA.
Sounds good.
Make it clean.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I saw move.
So are you making-
I saw move what he just said.
Thank you, Commissioner White. Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion and support. Anything further? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Second item is the county commissioner's salary and schedule of per diems, which, again, you approved previously on December 3rd, and so this is a resolution to formalize that decision. And that decision was to increase the county board salaries for 2025 at the Consumer Price Index that was available on October 24th, the most recent at 2.6%. That's the CPI for Midwest urban consumers, and to make no change in the per diem rate, County Commissioners, for 2025.
Would anyone like to make a motion? Commissioner?
Well, Madam Chair, I just wanted to communicate for the thoughts I had. I was corrected after our last meeting that in negotiations, I'd normally advocate for an average, and that was not in my mind at the time of this conversation.
The average of the CPI.
Thank you. Average CPI for the COLA. So if we looked at a 10-year average, which we don't have to, we can just do the one year as we already discussed and voted on, but if we looked at a 10, it would be 2.85. I'm assuming if we did either a 3 or a 5, it would be higher, significantly higher than 3 even. But I wanted to bring that point forward because I think it is a more stable way to go for employees, and what I tried to advocate for, I just failed in our last meeting. So I want to put that out there for discussion to see if that makes more sense as far as putting money where the mouth is, or if we want to stick with just the one-year CPI.
Thoughts by Commissioners? Commissioner Starley?
Thank you. Things change, though. If you do a 3 or a 5, I think when you go by a year, that could either go up or down-
Right.
-because of what's going to happen out east.
Right.
The influence of all.
Yeah, yeah. No, that's why I was, that's why I tried to advocate for an average, you know? It's just, I don't, I don't know, just like you said, if we do it by the year, during COVID, it would be 7%, and then before COVID, it was 0%. And, you know, it's just all over the place if we do an average, you know? The 10-year average right now is 2.85. And if we did a three-year average, I think it would include COVID inflation, and so we, I wouldn't think we'd want to do that, or a five-year. I think we'd want the longer term. I don't think employees will like that, but I think it's a good way for Commissioners to go. I still think it's a good way for employees to go, but it's, that's part of negotiation, so.
Just to clarify, in case somebody is thinking, this is still, you'd be using the 10-year average, but it's for one year-
Yes.
-of board salary.
Yeah, not doing it for 10 years.
And next year, you'd be looking at the 10-year average at the nearest state again to be consistent.
Yeah, that's my intention. Thank you.
Commissioner White?
Why 10 years?
That's a good, long time to get an average. We could do three or five, like I was saying, or 20 or whatever, but it just seemed like that's up for discussion, or not set on 10. We could do nine or 11 or whatever, just something longer to get that more stable changes rather than following the CPI, which can go every, well, it gets less stable.
Commissioner Johnson, did you have a question?
Yeah, no, it wasn't a question, it's observation about what timeframe, 10 years, like you said, and COVID screws up everything. So I get that we're going to be talking about that forever. But I'm thinking if you're really trying to capture wage and inflation, tying it to a shorter time period, four or five years, is probably better. Otherwise, you're talking about 10 years ago, the cost of something, and we all know things go up. And is it really fair to count that dozen eggs at a dollar over here when now it's $4 over here? I don't know. I'm just-
Yep. Well, I think that's a valid point. I'm not tied to the 10-year. I just, I thought it might be more palatable because it will be lower, and we don't want to be pushing things up. But to be more accurate, I agree with Commissioner Johnson, and I'll try to-
And that's, I will just think your labor negotiation team is going to push back on the same exact thing, and that's why they don't want that, to use that. They don't want that average. So I'm fine with the way we are doing this for this year, the way it was presented to us. 2.6, I think, is just fine.
I'm fine with that as well.
I'm okay for this year.
Thank you.
We'll figure it out next year.
Do I hear a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve the resolution for the commissioner's salary and no change in per diems.
Okay. Is there support?
And 2.6%.
Support.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, the Caribou Lake Watershed Subordinate Service District.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. This is to approve a special assessment fee in 2025 for each of the property owners within the Caribou Lake Watershed Subordinate Service District for use over a five-year period for 2025 through 2029. So this, they've agreed that they would like to just be assessed, the whole 250 now, and they think that'll carry them for five years. Not that they couldn't come back and ask to assess themselves again later, but that's their plan. So in 2021, the county board reestablished the Subordinate Service District and for the continuation of the water quality testing and monitoring program that helps combat the aquatic invasive species. At that time, they requested a one-time special assessment fee of $60 that they will take them over a five-year period. So we did not end this district. In the past, you might have seen this come back to the board to be reestablished, but it wasn't established with an end date. So it's in existence, so this is just to ask for basically their financial recommendation for next year's tax special assessment.
Commissioner Starley, since this is in your district, any comments or remarks you'd like to make?
Nothing other than, you know, I'm glad that they agreed that that was going to be assessed to them. That was my question. I don't remember that they discussed this at any current meeting, but maybe they did. We only meet in May and Labor Day weekend, so must have been discussed then?
Yeah, this, well, this comes from the head of the organization-
Right.
-who, I take their word for it, that they, as we do with the Highway Department, where they have a spokesperson.
Right. Commissioner Johnson?
Well, I understand that I had the same concern, that I, first time I heard about it, and I didn't see, I was hoping to see a letter of support in our packet saying, yes, we are the coalition, and not just one person saying, oh, I need to raise the price. And are we, sure, it's not going to impact most people, but if I got a $250 assessment that I wasn't aware of, it would, I would not be happy seeing that. So I just want to make sure that, because I do, I had to go back and look, that was my first year, I think, first month and a half on the board, when we had a public hearing to set this district that had lapsed, and we had a public hearing and had that information from the public, there was obvious support for that $60. But now that we're going to $250, I'm just wondering what documentation we have to say that they still agree with an increase, or do we just get to say it?
Yeah, it's, I don't think there's a, there isn't a document for this as we have a policy for this as we do for the Highway Department, but even in that policy, they don't, I don't know that they have documentation.
Yes, they do.
Do they?
Well, when the subordinate-
Each time.
-service district, they have a process for the assessment because what work do you want done? And they have this meeting of, let's document what we're doing, how much is it going to cost? I don't know how it gets transferred to your office and as far as property taxes, but this has been discussed at Highway about those service districts and how they have to meet every year to talk about what's it going to, what's our cost?
But do they document it?
I don't believe I've ever seen anything for-
And I'm not arguing. I'm just asking if they actually do.
That maybe is-
I don't know how you would not document it if you got to go out for bid for something. I don't know.
No, I mean of the vote of the committees, of the people that are being-
Yes, they do.
They do. So they see that-
That's part of the, that's part of the policy.
Yeah. So they have, so they have that in their policy.
Yes.
So maybe, this is not, this is not the same. It's not a road, it's not that. But we could have a policy for any other kind of district like this that was similar to the Highway, which we don't right now. Do you want to look at that? We have time, because these assessments, they don't need to be approved until sometime in February when we put them on the tax rolls, so there's plenty of time to do that.
Commissioner Mills?
You said this is coming from the president of the association?
Yeah.
Even, even a minute's of a meeting saying-
What I can do is I can contact a couple folks, as long as we have some time here, and then get the official written, they approved, they talked about this and approved it in, on Labor Day weekend. That would be the last time they met.
If we could have that for our first business meeting in January, that would be great. And then I think it behooves us to establish a policy that's consistent with different kinds of subordinate service districts.
Well, this is the only other one we have, but, you know, the way things are moving, there could be others.
Yeah.
So the vote at the Highway is to say, this person speaks for us, and we all, and there's documentation that it was talked about at-
Mm-hmm.
Here's the minutes of the meeting saying, you are our person. That's how it works.
And it probably says that somewhere in the policy. And even if it doesn't, it's a good practice.
It's not the vote, it's the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Well, we have an agenda item for January. All right.
I'd make a motion to table this until we get some more documentation.
Thank you, Commissioner Mills. Is there support?
Support.
Motion support, all in favor to table till January? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I think there was another item. Oh, that's a joke. Sorry. So this is-
It's nice to start out with some humor before we get to this.
So this is the county board, this could be your last chance to approve the budget and levy unless you schedule a special meeting, so. So we've looked at it at length. On September 10th, just to summarize, our proposed levy that you approved was $13,396.910, which was a 9.81% increase over 2024. And some of the large items in this budget is a 3% cost of living increase for staff, 9.65% health insurance increase, additional staff for human resource and maintenance departments to manage their workloads, cost of a new payroll system, staff training, both per the strategic plan, highway equipment cost increase to maintain their equipment fund with rising costs, BCA software upgrade and security system replacement fund, use of $300,000 of the American Rescue Plan funds for HRA housing costs. This is a different section of the ARPA than what we just talked about. This is the, I won't say it, LATCF. Look, okay, I'm not going to try. And capital improvement bond costs. So since that 9.81%, various adjustments not requiring board-specific decisions have brought the increase down to 7.68. Well, you did approve the fee increases, so that was a big chunk. That was about $148,000, I believe, of additional revenue. But other, other changes were just normal process. For example, retirements, or actually, if there are significant retirements of department heads is a significant savings. And then people coming in who aren't taking health insurance and things like that have helped to bring that cost down. You've also, you've talked about using parts of the 2.157 million of our B2BCA reappraisal reserves to offset the levy increases, so that's available. High interest rates continued in 2024, and they've helped our fund balance significantly, and they've given us these options for funding capital improvements, softening the levy, increasing housing needs. I sent out earlier this week just some options. What would, what would it take to bring what's currently at 7.68% to bring it down to 6? It would take about $204,000. To bring it down to 5.5% would take about $265,000. To bring it to 5%, $326,000 and some odd dollars. You could go lower, 4.5%. $387,000 it would take. To 4%, $448,000. And if you wanted to go-
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
4% would take about $448,000, and 3.5% would take about $509,000. And that could be any combination of use of the fund balance or any cuts you might choose And I see Roland sent out an email recently on some questions from one of the commissioners and some of my responses. And I would, one of the questions was, you know, what's our, what's been the long-term expense change? Like, what's been our average expense change over the last five years? And, you know, the trend is up. If you look at in five years, this is since 2020- If you look at in five years, this is since 2020, the expenses in the general fund have averaged 7.2%, 7.3 in the Highway Department and 5.3 in Human Services. And then I went back and looked at the long-term, 25-year average. And for the general fund, it's 4.7%, 3.5% in the Highway Department and steady in Human Services, 5.6%. So they've actually gone down slightly in the last five years. But it just tells you that there's a, you know, there is a general trend. And just to keep that in mind, we've had some good fortune in recent years with the, you know, the federal funds that have come in after COVID. And I think that's, isn't that, some of the talk I hear that the, the large levy increases around the state is that, and even more so, I think, in other counties that needed more, used more funding for, for COVID, for recovery and, and all of that. And so now that's disappeared. So I think that's some of what's hitting, you know, other counties, probably cities too. So just something to keep in mind.
And to make that comparison, that using the sales tax money is the same principle of COVID money, a short-term boost to your fund balance and using it to, for ongoing expenses, there comes a point when you have to pay the piper there. So when you look at this financial management plan, which when I was looking at it and to think that our three major funds are budgeting 4% expenses every year, I'm, it was like, that doesn't make sense to me. That doesn't. And then, so that's why I asked Brady for that spreadsheet that shows, no, we haven't been at 4%. So, and I appreciate he went back to 2020, but I think, like I said earlier, that's, when you're looking as far as budget and planning ahead, going back that far and saying that's what you're going to spend doesn't make sense. You have to use rational numbers thinking about going forward because it's very unlikely those eggs will ever get back to a dollar.
And that, that kind of comes back to a point that was made at our Budget and Facilities Advisory Committee last month. One of our citizens who sits on that board looked at the information and said, I really think 6% is where you might be want to look.
But what I'm saying is what was given to us to say, hey, we can afford everything? These numbers are higher. These levy amounts are not realistic. Especially when you figure, factor in the lost money, the, when I say lost, the sales tax money, local option sales tax, to reduce our levy and then it goes away and our levy is going to skyrocket. Or it could, if you don't cut what you're provide, the other services you're providing because you're using this for new positions. We've got two, three new positions. What do we have? Well, actually, one we've already approved in Public Health. So but there's new positions that weren't in previous budgets. We have new spending, new projects, sawtooth bluffs projects. We have, and I'm not saying they're not good things. But we heard earlier this morning the FireWise will likely need support down the road. We don't have a whole lot of wiggle room if we decide to go forward with a $35 million project especially. And I had the opportunity to sit in on the BKV group the other day and really liked the construction manager. I think they did a good job choosing having them. I appreciate that Brooke recommended that group. I think it's going to, you're going to do great with them. But that one, he says, plan on the higher end of your budget. So this 7.5, probably we're going to go over that, which we kind of always knew. I always think it's funny. They try to give you a, a range, but you would know right away, they're going to go to the top. So right here, you know, the information you're being given to make financial decisions that are going to impact taxpayers five, six, seven years from now. This is not complete or accurate. And I, I have a problem with that. And which is why I advocate, we shouldn't use all of our reserves for ongoing expenses. Now you want to put it aside and say, that's what we want to do to reduce our bonding. So we don't have to bond for 8 million. We only have to bond for 5 million. That, I think, is a good option. But using it for ongoing expenses of wages, healthcare, new programming, it's not, that's what's gotten the state in trouble right now because they spent one-time money on ongoing expenses. Get out of my soapbox. Commissioner Mills.
Yeah, one of the things I've been advocating for, and I've done so previous to our wage study was that weaning off. And so I agree 100% that we can't sustainably do that, spend our, our reserves to do that. But I do think we can wisely spend our reserves to wean off and lessen that impact because I think what we've been hearing all year is these requests aren't just pie in the sky. They're, they're real and they've been kicking around for a good number of years. The capital requests in particular have been kicking around over 10 years. And it's, it's, I think, a disservice to our community and, and our staff to not take action on, on those. And it's absolutely true. We have to plan for it. I, I really appreciate the two different scenarios with that harder hitting levy and then asking Ellers to come back with a softer one to kind of spread that out. And, you know, I would, I would ask that we, we spread that out even further. You know, come 2030, it goes down to 3.57. To Commissioner Johnson's point, it is maybe a discrepancy between what our actual costs are. But if we take, you know, the seven, the seven and the six and bring them all down to five and spread that out over a longer period of time, it accomplishes it without having that, you know, big impact. And we can do that by a combination of using reserves as well as the levy. Just using all the tools that we have. But I don't think it's impossible. It's just not easy.
Did you look at the debt service, levy-funded bonds and notes?
Which page are you looking at?
Well, it's, every single page has levy-funded, I mean, depending on which one you want to look at.
So maybe December 9th, 2024? That's at the top? December 9th, 2024?
Sure.
Okay. And then which line item?
That, that's the one where they factor it in and you only have to pay interest, I assume, is part of what that one was. So 73, so 84 lines. Levy-funded bonds and notes.
So 79?
I think that's an important number to look at. This is what it costs us when we want to levy for new debt. And we're talking almost $1.6 million, just a few years down the road here. That's a big portion of your levy.
Yeah.
Which if you didn't have to bond, if you didn't have to borrow as much because you had a savings account over here, that you've got the cash, you don't have to spend $1.6 million and send it out of state to investors. You could keep it here in this community to provide the services that you want to expand down the road.
So you're saying that going from potentially $35 million to $32.5 is?
I don't, I'm just saying, if you save, if you don't pay interest on a lot. It's, we all do it at home with our mortgages or our cars. The bigger down payment you can make, the less you have to borrow.
Yep. And the more on the principal, yeah.
Right. So this is where the community says, we wish government worked like business. Doesn't work that way, which is why I want somebody with governmental experience sitting in that chair over there. Because they're, they are two different things. But it's spending decisions that the community is frustrated by because we don't think like other people about how we spend our money and maybe putting some things off for later and say, we don't get that trip to Disney World this year because we need to fix our roof. We have buildings that need to be fixed. We have space issues that we heard this morning. We're going to have to hire an architect to solve in this interim. While we figure out what to do next, I'm saying, do we really need to start a committee and plan for a sawtooth bluffs? Do we really need to set everything aside for a new tandem truck and driver? Could we get by with half that amount this year and stretch that out? Because that makes more sense to be responsible of saying, we don't get to do everything this year because we need a new building for whatever it is that we abs, what are our priorities? What have we been talking about all year long? Building, building, building. And we're saying, well, that's not priority here.
I think it is priority, absolutely. Our capital projects. I would say our priorities are that whole list that were, were put on there. And that's why I'm saying, I think we can do this. Nothing here is Disney World. These are all things that, I mean, how, how else can we better serve the public if our staff don't have the space to do that or we're not planning ahead for our needs and improving? I think a lot of the difficulties that we're in right now is from a lack of planning and a lack of budgeting for the future. And, and I understand, we don't want to bite off more than we can chew. But what I'm saying is with the PILT dollars, we can work with that to leverage what we have and, and accomplish more so that future generations, future commissioners, future boards don't have to plan for things that should have been planned for previously, much like I think we are right now. It's, 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 I think it's a more holistic approach to try to cover those things rather than, you know, saying, no, we're not going to set aside for the tandem when we know our roads and our, the, the community's growth is happening. There are more demands, more as subordinate service districts. And just those demands are, are building. And so I would like to, I'd like to address our community needs. And I think, I think we can do that and cushion the levy impact.
So one of the things that is very new information is related to PILT money, our federal PILT money. And we received on Friday afternoon about 4:30, a call from Senator Smith's office indicating that she is bringing forward this week a bill in the, well, I shouldn't say a bill. An, an item that they are proposing for unanimous consent. And it would bring back our Boundary Waters dollars to the 2008 level, which was the highest that we've had. And then you recall it was cut, there was the reappraisal and it went up a little bit. But there seems to be very strong feeling by her office that this can be done. If that's the case, I would support taking the reappraisal money that we had, and we talked about this last time, and pulling that out of the budget for this year. Again, knowing that depending on what happens in the United States Senate, we might have to make some changes a year from now. But I don't believe her office would have contacted us about this had there not been a real strong feeling that this was going to go through. So I'd like to recommend that we remove the 18.9 from the budget based on that brand-new information. And I want to thank Rowan and Brady and Bob Thompson for yesterday putting together some documentation for Senator Smith on the impacts to Cook County because what they're bringing forward in the Senate will very likely have a positive impact on Cook County and Lake County. Those are the only two counties that would be impacted. It's really good news. It was a great phone call. I also would like to talk about sawtooth bluffs, which Commissioner Johnson brought up last time. The city of Grand Marais put a really low priority on that at their last meeting. And my feeling is we need to work with the city of Grand Marais on this. It's a very important regional piece. When I was at AMC, I actually went to a regional trail planning meeting to talk about what to do. And one of the things I learned that they did in southwestern Minnesota is they had the University of Minnesota Extension put together a study on the economic impact of a regional park like that. And then brought that back to a variety of cities and counties to help them move forward. And so I'm thinking, since this, it's low on the city of Grand Marais' priority, that we put this off for at least a year, that we meet with the city to talk about how to develop a long-range plan, look at engaging extension services to help us get some information for how to move forward. But it was, it was really quite amazing, the study that they did. They, on existing trails that were already in some of these counties, they put counters on so they could find out how many bikes had gone up and down, how many people were walking the trails. They collected data and then they used that in projecting what a regional park and regional trails would add to the economic vitality of those communities. And it was, it was really amazing. So I would also suggest that we consider pulling that 29.5 off in addition to the 18.9 for the Boundary Waters appraisal. Thoughts from other commissioners? Commissioner Mills?
I, I'm a little skeptical of the additional revenues that designation might bring to our community from visitors. I think that the real potential is the legacy dollars that it can bring to help. And that's not ongoing. That's just to, to kind of build it out. Also, oh shoot, I lost it. It was in regards to the Parks and Trails Committee. Oh, thank you. The city, so in the conversations of the Parks and Trails Commission, their understanding, our understanding is the city is kind of like, here you go. They, it's such a low priority that they're not really interested. And so it's just all county. It's 100% in the county's hands. And the city is willing to put the land there, but they're not looking to take on any more project, you know, so. And that's not going to change from what I know of their organizational structure. So that was never, I mean, it, it is always better to have more engagement and more partners, but I think it's pretty well-understood that it's just a, it's just a county deal at this point. So if we wait for the city, it'll never, nothing will happen. I can understand why it's not a priority. I just don't think that we need to cut it. It's, it's one of those things that's been on the docket for many years. And like I said, we do have the funding available. We can make this as painful or as painless. We can make this as painful or as painless as, as we need. We have that cushion, and that additional PILT money is a shocker to me. I won't count on it as far as our financial management plan is concerned. But as far as the reappraisal is concerned, I think I can, I can be comfortable with keeping that out of our, of our costs.
Comments from other commissioners?
Commissioner White? Something's gotta be cut somewhere. I mean, as Commissioner Johnson said, we'll just take it from, from the reserves, and then somewhere down the road, we'll start getting it evened out. You don't get things evened out unless you, something's gotta go. There's gotta be reduction somewhere. And, yeah, we, we got like free money. We fortunate, we've got the COVID dollars, we got PILT dollars. It's great, but just because we have it all, I really agree that if we don't have to put that money towards interest payments in the long run, which is not that far away, we will be getting more bang for the buck. You know, we will have more building, or we'll be putting our dollars towards building assets for the community as opposed to sending it away as interest. So, I mean, some, at some point, we've got to just, just make a, we've got to reduce our spending where we can, and that's all departments. And I know, I mean, we're at nine-point-eight, we're at seven-point-whatever. And looking at this, this, that we got the county financial management plan, and I can't find it quickly, I did the other day. But at some point, the impact on the levy will be seventeen point some percent. Where did I see that? Do you know where I saw that?
It was on one, one of the versions that we asked them to soften. So on version three, you won't see that any longer.
So that would have been the document dated December fourth on this three and four, pages three and four, I believe. And that's the difference, as Brady's alluding to, it's just two different ways to service the debt. Either a high levy increase one year, or more moderate levy increases over a number of years.
And that's where I was saying, I would either, I would like to extend that more moderate further.
You have the...
How far out?
You have the December ninth?
December ninth?
Yeah, looking for Deb. Can you look, got there, right?
It's December fourth.
Both December fourth?
Yeah, there's...
Oh, it's one, one's December ninth, not December fourth.
So how do you plan on extending that up?
We can go to 2033, and we can leverage our reserves to keep that lower throughout. And that's, I mean, pretty much what we did with the COVID relief or the wage study is to use part of that to taper our reliance on it off, to incorporate the levy into making those operational payments. And I'd say we're pretty darn successful with that as far as the impact on taxpayers because incorporating a million-dollar wage into the, into the levy is, is not easy. And so I think we can do that with the PILT reserves that we have, as well as maybe if it comes through the future ones. But I'm a little, I'm still a little reluctant to count on that.
So I'm looking at line eighty-five, cash balances.
December, December ninth or fourth?
December fourth. I don't know if it makes a big difference, but yeah, I, I, they're the same, I think, they're very close. But so cash balances, that's your reserves, which includes your thirty-five million that you bonded, right? It might, because we haven't spent, or maybe it's in there that we spent it all. Still analyzing this. What I'm saying is, and this is that fund balance number down here, I said, this is the first time it showed up on a financial management plan I've ever seen. I've never seen this before, so I didn't quite understand what that percentage was. But it goes down, and then I wanted to know, because we do have a budget and fiscal policy where we say that fund balances won't fall below a certain level. And you will notice that they do here quite substantially. So when you get down here and realize your, your fund balance, your cash balances are dropped, are there, is that really, and when you say, oh, we can spend all that, well, no, we can't. We have, so I don't understand.
Well, this, this is a different kind of calculation. They're actually using cash balance rather than our reserves. And they're using things such as the highway department. All of their expenses are in the expense numbers. And we don't use that when we're calculating our reserves against it because that's, that's their highway construction fund, which is almost a hundred percent funded by state and federal gas taxes. So we gotta, we have to take that out to get a realistic number when we do our analysis. And just as one example.
So, okay, I'm, okay, I'm sorry. I just want to clarify, so then when it says four percent...
So there's nothing wrong with this, it's just that they're not doing the same type of analysis. We have the same amount of money.
Okay, so this cash balance is not our reserve fund?
It's not, it's a cash balance, number one. It would, our reserves are, are undesignated or committed reserves are less. This is a cash reserve, but...
Well, that's, yeah.
But they're including all expenses, not operational expenses. That's what we calculate for...
For our...
For our percentage.
So...
You know, this is not a perfect document.
Okay, so I get it, that, that highway fund. So you can't just say four percent of the expenses, because that includes...
Well, you, you can if you, I mean, whatever you want to program in here and look at the long term. Their long-term expenses are actually, their operational expenses are less than everybody else over long term. Partly in the, in that long view, as you point out, because they were really held down for a number of years compared to in recent years. But, but that's just, that, that percentage has given you a trend. Whether it's the trend of the operational or the trend of the whole expenses, my point is just that all of those expenses would not be part of our analysis of the percent. We'd be deducting probably twelve million or more of that for construction costs.
Right.
And we have less, we wouldn't be including that. And the same for those bond costs, we don't include that. We include our three major funds. So it's, it's just, it's, it's apples and oranges as far as that. The trend is probably the most important, if you want to, is that that fund balance percentage, it goes up, and then it starts to tail off at the end. And the reason it's tailing off out there at twenty-thirty, thirty-one, thirty-two, thirty-three is we don't have the sales tax reserves any longer. We don't have as much. We're building up. They, they're actually doing this, probably close to the way I would do it, because we didn't, we didn't tell them exactly how to do every line in this. But that's similar to what I would probably do. They're taking this two million, two and a half million a year, and then you can see that they're using some of it. All the money shows up in the general fund, but not all of it goes into the fund balance, because some of it's being used to offset some of the bonding costs. And as you get farther on, more of it's being used to offset the bonding costs. And then you have, you don't have as much to cover this after 2033, but you still have, even with this plan, you still have about three-point-seven million to help fund the bond costs even off this chart, because those expenses continue. But you do have to have a plan out that far. But that's a long way to plan that and know what you're gonna have. But things like PILT come into play and things like that that, you know, your, your guesses beyond 2030, 33 are becoming more guesses than good estimates. But just know, like, you haven't used all the sales tax money on this chart. There's still some left, because they've been trying to use some and use a little more as the debt gets bigger, but they're trying not to use all of it on this chart to keep the levy down. Let's just keep the levy down, we'll use all that sales tax money, and then fall off the, the end at the end. So they're trying to moderate it in a fashion like we would with the, our other fund balances. If you use the two-point-one-five-seven, you wouldn't want to use a large amount of that if you didn't have to this year. Know it's there for a number of years. Use a little bit this year, use a little bit next year. And in our case, probably try to want to use less as you go along.
So Brady, what would we need to use in PILT? It sounds like there's kind of a consensus, it's okay to remove that Boundary Waters reappraisal fund. How much would we need then to use of our fund balance?
Three-oh-eight.
Three-oh-eight?
Yeah, if you want to, depending on what number you want to get to.
It's five.
I'm looking at five.
Okay.
That's where I'm focused.
Yeah, if you take eighteen off of there, maybe it's roughly three-oh-eight.
Madam Chair? In the summary here, my understanding after much discussion many meetings ago was that most of this is a one-time ask, except for cost of living and, and health insurance. We never know what's gonna happen there. But Commissioner Mills indicated that he thought this was gonna be a one-time. We aren't gonna be borrowing another H R on and on here, right? Is that what you meant?
The bump will be a one-time. It's not that we have to keep increasing it.
No.
And so this increase is a one-time thing. So the, the expenses will stay, most of them are ongoing expenses. It's just that we won't be doing it year after year after year as far as the bump. And so that's why I was thinking we'd be able to taper and, and use some of the, the PILT just to incorporate into the, into the...
And still take care of these that, as part of the summary?
Yes.
The asks that we have?
Yes, yeah. But that would require using the, the PILT to the tune of three-hundred-and-eight thousand if we keep the reappraisal out of there. Which would leave one-point-eight million, one-point-seven million-ish in the PILT reserve. Which, again, I, I don't want to use that for operational, but I don't want to have a high impact on the levy. And so I want to use it to, you know, work, bring the levy up, bring the, you know, the use of it down, and just try to meet, meet for that softer landing.
So that we'd be left with one-point-eight-four-five million.
And you realize then, next year, you're gonna have to use more than that because you are going to have COLA increases, operational increases that you are putting into place today that are going to be more expensive next year at this time. So that one-point-seven million in reserves, it's going, you're going to take a bigger chunk next time just to keep it equal, right?
If, it depends on what we set our levy at. If we set our levy at three percent, then yes. If we set our levy of, next year, this is, if we set our levy at five percent, I'm not so sure. Because like I was just explaining, this kind of bump is not gonna happen year after year. It's just the COLA which we negotiated to, less, less than three for next year. So I think if, I think if we take this approach, we, we can successfully taper off of the use of PILT for operations.
Commissioner White?
I, now I'm really confused. You're saying the bump, the bump is like, so we have the cost of living, but increase. But that cost of living increase won't be a bump next year. It'll just be the increased cost, which will move along every year until we negotiate again, and then it'll go up again. So call it a bump, call it whatever, but it is an actual increase in expenditures that will just continue to go forward into the future. And it will just keep going forward.
It will grow.
It will grow, I mean, definitely it will grow.
By about the cost of living increase. This year, we have a bump of six-hundred-and-eighty-four thousand that was proposed, minus that eighteen. That's what's not gonna happen again next year, is what I'm saying. It's just the COLA.
So we'll know that, so predicting the future, no one, no departments will come in next year and say, well, we need this, 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 this. Not saying they're frivolous asks or anything like that, but we absolutely cannot sit here and say, well, this is a one-shot deal. Everything's gonna be running smoothly in a year, and we'll only have to worry about the cost of living. Real life doesn't work like that. You put a lot of money into fixing, say, your car or your lawnmower, and you take it and use it, and then something else goes wrong. Now, we don't have old equipment, I get that, but life is like that. Everything's fine till somebody falls down and breaks their foot. So we cannot predict what's going to be additional expenses in the, in the next year. And we just have to, I don't want, people, I like to believe that when you live in a community, everyone has to pay for being part of the community. I mean, the community provides services. And this community of Cook County has an abundance, or a real heartfelt, sincere efforts are made to provide services for our community people. We have community volunteers for our EMS, for we, for fire departments, for food shelves, for everything like that. But there's still, it's gotta be paid for somehow, it's gotta be paid for. And so taxes are the way that we do this. However, the demographics of this county are aging, and we have many people on fixed incomes. And some of these people will still be alive in 2033 or whatever. And at that point, if we have no more PILT monies to be spent, do they decide it's time to move somewhere else, like with their children? I don't know, but, but taxes, it's great, land values go up, but so do your taxes. And if you can't support paying the taxes, maybe you just, it's just like if you can't, if you can't fix one more thing, then you either live without that one more thing or you live with it not being in perfect shape. And I just, you keep borrowing from savings hoping that we're going to, and maybe we will. Maybe there'll be another huge influx of money from the federal government, from, won't be coming from the state, because they're facing a big deficit in another, another go-round. But maybe, but we can't budget for the county on maybes. I mean, I, I still don't, I understand your, your belief in we're weaning ourselves off. I don't, I, I just can't understand how we're, I can't in my mind figure out how we're weaning ourselves off when there'll be no reductions in expenditures because life always hits more expensive. But we'll just keep spending down PILT dollars, and then it'll all be good. I, I just, maybe it's my brain that can't... I just, maybe it's my brain that can't, I can't, I can't figure it out. Could just be trying to figure out positive and negative numbers and all of a sudden one day it all makes perfect sense. But at this point, I can't, I can't, in my mind, if I feel comforted by that fact, that if we spend the money and we keep spending the money, then we get to a certain point when the PILT dollars are gone, then it's all good. That'd be great. So that's just, it could be my personal inability to understand, to embrace what you're saying. And you could be perfectly right and the future may show up and PILT comes in and we get an extra million dollars a year from PILT. I mean, I don't know. We don't know. So, or everyone will decide they don't want to live in Cook County anymore and we can reduce our highway department and everyone goes away and we just live here. I, you know, so that said, okay, I said all I need to say.
I might be able to illustrate a simplified and fairly arbitrary way and how this works.
Okay.
So say our COLA is 2.75. Okay, that's one of the largest drivers of our levy is, is levy increases is COLA. So say that just, for instance, that translates to a 2.75 levy increase.
Okay.
We have 2.1 million dollars in reserve. If we also have funding requests like we do this year for 600,000, instead of setting our levy at 2.75, we can set it at 5, which is more than what we need to cover that COLA. And we can reduce that by spending some of the PILT. But the idea is that you can increase levy than you need to slightly than the expenses to try to get yourself off of spending that savings, as you, as you put it.
So then we would have extra dollars each year where.
Just, it depends on how we spend the PILT. That's what I'm saying. If we can try to get it to meet, you know, wean ourselves off, that's, that's the concept.
That's the glide path.
And that's what we did with the wage study increase is we had these dollars that came in from, wasn't ARPA, was it ARPA?
Yeah, ARPA was one.
It was the, I thought it was like the rural, the West Coast thing or whatever. Remember we paid back like 200,000 or something, or I forget what it was, 20,000? But anyways, we had this extra money and so we did have to raise the levy still significantly, but we were able to use some of that dollars to make it not as high. And then we did it over a second year, but not to the same amount. And so then we were able to raise levy, spend savings and it was, I thought, pretty, pretty successful in making that kind of an adjustment. Painless for taxpayers or minimizing pain, I should say, because you're right. Taxes keep going up. I would mention that property values are not a direct relationship between increased property taxes because it's spread out everywhere, but you know, the costs keep going up, just like you said. And, and they always have. And I'm assuming in the type of economy that, our global economy that we have, that they continue, they will continue. One of the things that I would like to do when I get capacity to do that, and I've discussed this a little bit with Commissioner Johnson and others at AMC. I've also talked with Bruce Kimmel a little bit about it, is to try to figure out some kind of tax relief. And if, if we have these people, and we do, that are on fixed incomes and really struggling to pay their taxes, that's a significant burden on their family budgets. Why can't we give tax relief to them? And have second homeowners or Lakeshore owners or whomever, you know, have the brunt of that? And that's a program that is not simple. I think Brady is skeptical of the legality of it. I think Bruce Kimmel gave me a little more encouragement around that. But it's just a talk at this point. It's just an idea, so that's down the road. But it's something I think is a, is a, is a very worthwhile endeavor to try to help the people in our community and meet all of the demands that are out there.
And the first step to that is that second homeowner property becoming one tax classification, not a separate one.
That would be very helpful.
And that's the thing in the legislature that we, for us here, is really important to us.
That'd be really helpful. Well, Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve our budget excluding the reappraisal and including 308,000 of our PILT reserves. To, what else, what more do you need there Brady to get our levy at 5%?
Yeah, so the, removing the appraisal 18, is it 18,000?
Oh, I'm sorry. That was more like 19 then.
So if you remove that at 18,900, to get it to exactly 5%, you need 307,691.
So do you want to amend your motion to reflect that 307,691?
Yes, please.
Is there support?
Support.
Thank you, Commissioner Starling. So we have a motion and support to eliminate the Boundary Waters reappraisal fund for the 2025 budget and use 307,691 of Boundary Waters reappraisal funds or PILT funds to offset levy increases. Any questions, comments? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries three to two. All right. Thanks to everybody for a good discussion and a lot of hard work. All right, we'll go to meeting updates. Commissioner Johnson.
I don't have anything right this second.
Commissioner White.
One big thing that makes some people in Hovland very exciting was started with a, on the way to the highway road meeting with a constituent, stopped the talk and thanks to Tim Nelson and his department, Hovland now has their recycling trailer out in Hovland again, which is now I don't have to go the other way around to avoid my constituents. So that was a very, very good meeting that we, that we had. Although my constituent then said, oh, well, I don't go there anyway, but I know other people that do. I come to town anyway. So it was, it was very, thank you, thank you, Tim Nelson for getting, getting it out there. And many people are excited about being able to recycle. I can't think where else I've been at the moment.
You've been. I remembered something that I had written on that I wanted to say. I just want to talk about the HRA board and, you know, so proud of the work that got done over this last year there and with Jason's leadership. But I also wanted to call out Cascade Vacation Rentals. They have been setting aside 1%. They charge their guests 1% extra on top of the, whatever lodging tax, whatever other fees. But they charge 1% that they donate to the HRA in donations. And we were hoping that there'd be other vacation rentals, other businesses that would join them. That hasn't happened yet, but we, you know. But I want to call them out that they have been very faithful in sending in that money and that is seed money to help us continue the housing in Cook County. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Well, and along the vein of housing, I just found out that Hamilton Habitat has been getting all of their building materials at cost for all these years from Cook County Home Center. And that's, that's local, supporting local, local dollars staying local. And that's like, that's our community. So don't go to Menards, go to Cook County Home Center for whatever you need. So that's my little plug for Jeff and the people there.
Commissioner Mills.
Nothing beyond our morning updates.
Commissioner Starling.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to report mainly from AMC. It was so well-attended that we had buffet lines set up in the hallways for us because we never had that before. It was really, really well-attended. And I went to many good workshops and updating on things with public health and all that. But what I want to say, I feel today is more important, is that we have received an award. Cook County has been designated County of the Year. And that's because our safety.
Yeah, Safety Committee.
Group of people have been so diligent in all aspects of living in Cook County, whether be careful when you're on Gunflint Trail, you don't hit a moose. And as you say, don't slip on the ice going out of the courthouse or other places too. And this was a survey that was done by them over a three to five-year period. So you know how the stage is set up with all the poinsettias and the trees and all that? So everybody came up and we were presented this award and then they took our picture. Commissioner Sullivan is going to have something in the paper and then it'll be in AMC newsletter too, I'm sure. But to me, it's kind of like winning the Academy Award, you know? Because we have so many people behind getting this good award that it was really something for all of us to be proud of. So we'll have to find a place to hang this sometimes. We're getting so many awards now that we may have to have a special award while going down the middle or over the side or something, but we'll figure it out. So that's, that's what I'll report right now from AMC. And I will write a thank you note. I represent from the board on MCIT. So that's a special group of people and I will write them a thank you note. Thank you.
Well, I'm going to just break with the way today has been approached. I have a lot to share. So I think about since we gathered last and one of the groups that met was MinCola. They, our Cook County Coalition of Lake Associations does not meet in December and we attend the statewide, and this was via Zoom. And they prioritize three different areas legislatively. Water quality through repair and buffers around lakes, discouraging the spread of AIS. And one of their ideas is something that has occurred in other states where when you bring a big boat down I-94 or any interstate, you're stopped at the state line and they check your boat. And the biggest threat for invasives is coming right now from the state of Michigan. And so I don't know if they're going to prioritize a Wisconsin border or do all the borders, but that is something they want to work on legislatively. And then they were really impressed with the Caribou Lake approach to dealing with wake boats. And so they are hoping to establish for the purposes of safety and water quality and environmental concerns, a 600-foot distance from shore where wake boats can be throughout the state of Minnesota. So Cook County has really impressed their group. Cook County Local Energy Project met and they're researching grant opportunities through the Carolyn and McKnight Foundations, doing some event planning for the Builders Workshop, which is at Cook County Higher Ed. All our local contractors can go there for continuing ed credit. So they're working on that and also Earth Day. And then board recruitment. They have a couple of vacancies on their board right now. Firewise, we heard a lot about that today, but there was just a lot of accolades and remarks to Aaron Moll and Kling for the great work that he's done with the Firewise Community Applications. And he's finishing his final application this week for the Loon Lake Association. That was one of his priorities. And then one thing I learned at the Firewise meeting is that our highway department has purchased, or has a trailer and they have a biochar unit on it. And so.
I'm sorry?
Yeah.
Our highway department?
Yeah, our highway department. And so I want to, I want to have them come and talk with us about it. You know, they are out clearing ditches, they're working with pits and pushing the pit piles up. And they, this wood waste trailer with a biochar unit is a way to, without putting junk in the air, get rid of that waste. And so I'm going to ask them to come and present to us at a committee of the whole so we can learn more, but that was great to hear.
It would be really powerful for Firewise.
Yeah, that's, that's why Matt talked about it there. And then I got information from the AMC Policy Committee and we'll make sure to duplicate all the legislative priorities and get them out to all of you. Attended many great sessions. Robbie Haas presented at AMC and talked about the impacts of transportation legislation and workforce changes. And his focus was on what to do in a community like ours where you need CDL drivers and there aren't any available. Well, you build a program with Cook County Higher Ed and you create your own workforce. And so he did a great job of presenting at AMC and was very creative in his approach and all. I went to a couple of cyber emergency workshops that talked about just the importance of annual training for staff, timing of events. So the holidays are coming up. Basically before holidays, don't click on anything. They know our staff is going to be gone for a long weekend or a couple of days and they try to get into your system right before you shut down before a holiday. And some of the costs that other counties have had are absolutely exorbitant. It is really important for all our staff to continue with the training that we have. That cyber emergency training was some of the best I've attended and it is something that our emergency management group is looking at. Attended an interesting piece on public hearings and meetings. And it was basically from attorneys reminding us to return to our pre-COVID policies. Most of us have not revised our policies since that time. And so to take a look at those, so I have that on a little list for 2025, and to really look carefully at our video and record retention policies. The recommendation from some of the attorneys we spoke to was to, you know, cut to five years or three years, but reduce the video retention. And particularly there are areas that we're doing it and we're paying for storage in places we don't need to, like Planning Commission, we store all those videos. We don't need to do that. We have minutes. And that is what the attorneys want for legal records. So it would be a way we could save some money. And our commissioner's basket that we put together with maple syrup and there's something from the North Shore Winery and Caribou Cream. We had World's Best Donut mug with some cocoa in there and some jalapeno jelly from Trail Center and that was a big hit. So got a lot of thanks for that basket. And then lastly, I attended on the way home, an interesting tribal forum. And it was the members of the tribal forum from AMC meeting with all the 11 tribal nations of the Chippewa County, or Chippewa tribe. meeting with all the 11 tribal nations of the Chippewa County, or Chippewa tribe. And we met in Hinckley and talked about how to work together legislatively. And we looked at the tribal priorities, we looked at AMC's priority. And what we struck agreement on, number one is mental health. Solid waste, bonding. And then through PHHS, the Department of Human Services, system modernization, getting rid of having to re-enter all these things, and ICWA compliance, which is federal, but how as a state can we support the training that staff need to do that appropriately? So those are our priorities that we're going to work on together. And then I will let you know as soon as we hear back from Senator Smith about Pilt. Well, we should hear from her or from Orion DeFranco later this week. So I won't communicate with you, that would be a violation of open meeting law. I will let Rowan and Jana send you something. And so we have a number of meetings coming up. It's going to be really busy as we approach 2025. We have correspondence and memos there, our tax comparisons. And then some really important recognition of staff today. So today is Commissioner Johnson's last day serving as Cook County Commissioner for District Two. And she's been serving with us since January of 2021. We took our oath of office together. And Stacy served on a variety of groups throughout the Association of Minnesota Counties, regional groups, and of course, many on a local or county level. And we'd like to extend our heartfelt thanks to you and gratitude to you for your four years of very dedicated service on the Cook County Board of Commissioners. And your commitment to the residents of District Two and your efforts on behalf of all of Cook County are deeply appreciated. Your work has been impactful. We're grateful for your time and for your energy and the passion that you've brought to your role. So thank you very much. A little something for you. And then our county attorney, Molly Hickin. On behalf of our residents and the leadership of Cook County, we want to extend our deepest gratitude to you as our long-serving county attorney for your unwavering dedication, integrity, and countless contributions to our community. Your commitment to upholding justice and providing sound legal advice has been instrumental in shaping both progress and stability for our county. Your professionalism and steady hand have left an indelible mark and your legacy will be felt for a long time to come. Thank you for your tireless service and we wish you the best in your next chapter.
Thank you so much.
And with that is there a motion to adjourn?
So who?
Is there a support? We are adjourned. Thank you all.
No, I.